...over the country who are interested in finding the truth. And we entered this with no, although many of us have political biases, personally, we brought none of those biases to our analysis. We just decided we wanted to try to find the truth using methods we believe to be reliable. Our findings were across the country, we found a tremendous number of anomalies. And Arizona is at the forefront of many of the anomalies we found. Now, unlike many other states that we evaluated, there were some unique limitations to our analysis in Arizona. In general, we were only able to get data for early and absentee voters in all of the six states we targeted. In Arizona, we were only able to get early and absentee voters for the county of Maricopa. So, all the numbers I'm sharing with you, all of the analysis is based solely on Maricopa. Now, as the other counties make their data available, we'll certainly try to update these reports and these numbers. But just looking at Maricopa, we found some interesting results. So, I'm going to open up a PowerPoint that kind of covers the country, but I'm really just going to speak about Arizona, which is, I know what you're interested in, so. So, we ran five or six different experiments on each of these states. One experiment that we ran, where we isolated a universe of voters according to the state who had been sent an absentee ballot but did not return that ballot. And we asked them two questions. One, we asked them, you know, by reaching out to them via phone, because we were operating three different call centers to try to reach these people, to confirm whether or not they had ever requested that absentee ballot, and whether or not they returned it. So, in Arizona, we were able to reach 2,044 people who had been identified as having requested an absentee ballot and not returned it, according to the state. Of those, 44% of them said they never requested that ballot. Then, among the individuals who did say they did request it, we asked, "Well, did you send it back?" And among those of the overall universe, we had 354 of them say, "Yeah, I actually mailed it back despite the state not recording, having received it back." Now, I've got a little bit of audio-visual for you, because our call centers were recording phone calls. Now, none of this is speculative. I know that some people of other analysts in some of the court cases I've been involved in have taken our numbers and then projected them. Say, for example, projecting that 44% of the did-not-requests of our sample out to the entire universe of about a half a million unreturned, saying, "These are the number of ballots that it seems, or appears possible, that somebody else requested those ballots other than the voter of record." But I'm not doing that myself. Others are welcome to make that analysis. I don't have a background as a statistician. But what I do have is I'd like to share with you some of the audio recordings of at least two of the individuals we spoke to, who said that they did not get a ballot, they did not request the ballot despite being sent them. Now, these audio recordings have been modified to cut out like their last names, because we don't want to inadvertently dox anybody here. But if somebody privately, as you're in positions of authority in the legislature, wants photo recordings, we're more than happy to share that with you, more than happy to give you the names, addresses, phone numbers of everybody we've identified in these categories, okay? So, I'm going to play the one audio recording of an individual.
Hello? This is Mary Kempf with Voter Integrity Fund. May I please speak to Charles?
Yes, sir. Who are you with?
Voter Integrity Fund. Charles March in the state of Arizona, and is having requested an absentee ballot. Did you request an absentee ballot?
Absolutely did not.
No. Okay. And did you? Okay, no. Okay, somebody from our team will follow up with you. And can you please give us the best phone number? Is it this?
So, I'll play for you the second example.
Hello? Hello? Hi.
Hi, um, is this Zofa?
Yes.
Hi, uh, my name is Taj. I'm with the Voter Integrity Fund. Um, in the state of Eric, I mean, Arizona, it said that she requested the absentee ballot. I'm just making sure that she requested that ballot?
No, I did not request an absentee ballot.
Okay, somebody from our team will follow up with you. Is this a good number to follow back up with you on?
Yes.
All right. All right, well, I appreciate your time. You have a good day.
Okay.
Excuse me, Matt. Before you go too much further, can you tell me what counties were those calls made to?
The only county that's released data for us is Maricopa.
All right, thank you.
Sure. I'm going to proceed. So, we, with some of the other experiments we ran, one of them was, again, no one's ever kind of tried to do this after an election before. Nobody's had the interest or the funds to do so, to like, to really think about, you know, if somebody was, if people were trying to cast illegally ballots, either as part of an organized voter fraud effort, or just somebody just deciding, "I'm going to cast a ballot I shouldn't," maybe a ballot that's not for my name, just one individual deciding, you know, "I got an absentee ballot requested to this address, my address, this person doesn't live in here anymore, but maybe I should fill it out and see if I can cast it," or, you know, potential clerical errors. And no one's ever really done this before. So, we tried some stuff that just kind of, that made us curious, things that we thought we might find, things. So, in Arizona, we actually polled a universe of people who had never voted before, except they showed up and voted this election. And just called them and say, "Hey, did you actually cast that ballot?" It's very hard. Any of you who've, I'm sure in your, maybe races for office, have operated phone centers or conducted public polling, when you start out with a universe that's, you know, pretty big, once you start trying to dial it and get responses, that number, that universe shrinks a lot, and shrinks very quickly. Because you have a broad universe, then you have to try to pin phone numbers to it, and you get maybe half of them or so. And the people who, the numbers are correct, or they don't go to voicemail, or some other problem, and people who actually pick up the phone and then start answering questions, that universe shrinks a lot. So, we did this experiment in Arizona with some, again, voters who'd never voted before, again, this, and asked them if they had cast that ballot. Now, about 1% of them told us that they didn't. But remember, those are people willing to talk to us and, you know, admit that they did not cast a ballot. And many of the people we reached, we had to leave voice messages for. We were just couldn't get a hold of. But one person in particular, I want to play a video for you guys, who, we left him a voicemail, but he never talked to us, so he's not included in these numbers. So, I want to share just a clip, if I can, from a program. Let me adjust the volume here.
Maricopa County, Arizona, to Tennessee about five months ago, so he could train for the Olympics. So, you can imagine his surprise when he got a message from something called the Voter Integrity Fund.
The state of Arizona is reporting that a ballot was cast in the name of Naishan Garrett in the general election on Tuesday. If Naishan Garrett did not cast this ballot, please call us back.
Well, that doesn't sound fishy at all, right? Well, Naishan didn't think so either. So, he went to the state of Arizona's voting website, only to discover that his ballot had been accepted. And Maricopa County's voter portal said his ballot was signature-verified and counted. The only problem is, he'd already voted in Tennessee. He didn't vote in Arizona. Naishan Garrett joins me now. Naishan, great to see you. Now, you never received an Arizona absentee ballot, or an application for mail-in ballots, so who the heck cast your ballot in Arizona?
That is an excellent question. That is an excellent question. I have no idea, and that's the reason why I'm on here with you tonight.
So, I'm going to stop the video there. But I think you get the drift of that. I'm actually going to play for you another recording here, which actually, this one was particularly interesting to me.
Hi, my name is Thomas with the Voter Integrity Fund. May I please speak with Riley?
Yep, speaking to him.
All right, hi. Can you confirm whether or not you cast a ballot in the state of Arizona?
I'm a felon, so I can't vote.
All right. Oh, let me see here. According to the state of Arizona, somebody cast a ballot in your name, and you may be a victim of voter fraud. Can you please give us the best number to reach you?
I mean, probably the one you're calling me at.
So, I cut the video, because, you know, whenever we reach somebody like this, we want to ask them a couple of questions, the best number to reach you at, would you be willing to sign a declaration or something like that, so we could pass that off to attorneys? So, I think those are two, and we've got hundreds of them, of different categories. So, well, as you've heard, we have recordings of everyone we spoke to, of the 900 or so that didn't request, of the 354 that said they did request but mailed it back, and somehow the state never got their vote. I want to talk about one of the other experiments we ran. We, at great expense, obtained a national voter file. And we used it to determine people who may have been registered here, moved to another state, registered to vote there, I believe invalidating their residency or inability to vote here, and then cast a ballot back here. Because, you know, we all have anecdotes, right? We've all heard crazy stories. I've had people, since this project has started, emailing me stories about suspicion, the sister-in-law or brother-in-law they don't like, they suspect they may have cast two ballots, they want me to look into it, and giving me their full addresses and dates of birth. Or I've also received, though, screenshots of social media profiles, saying, "This person, they live in New York City. They've lived here a long time." But they figured their vote wouldn't really matter in New York City, but it would matter back in Arizona. So, there's anecdotes, right? I don't think, I don't think it's ever possible to maybe get enough of those anecdotes to have a meaningful number. But what we did is, we took our national voter file and looked at registration dates there. And then we looked at the registration dates of people we matched it to in Arizona, where they moved from Arizona to California, for example, registered to vote there, and then decided they shopped their ballot, potentially, or they had the ballot cast in their name, and decided, "You know what? My vote might count more in Arizona than it does in California, swing state." So, we were able to identify these individuals who had to subsequent registration out of state, but cast their early absentee here. Again, just Maricopa County, and just early absentee, no Election Day. We also did an NCOA analysis. And when people move from one state to another, the postal service sort of tracks that. Often, people fill out an NCOA card, saying, "I've moved here, please forward my mail." It's a pretty good indicator they've established residency somewhere else. And we found among this population, a substantial number who NCOA'd to another state, but cast their ballot here. Now, I, I've kind of earned the reputation lately as kind of a data guy, but I work as a general consultant. I do all kinds of work around the country for candidates, everything from speeches to fundraising to designing literature. I've knocked on over 1,000 doors myself, this country, this cycle in states all over the country. And I can tell you that a lot of times, you know, people are, they move, and they're very careful about where they can vote, where they can make potential, potentially cast their vote, where they think, if they have options, they make a choice. And sometimes, they don't always make the right choice. So, just in my experience of that, you know, we, it's not that uncommon. So, people move, but they can still vote here, they get an absentee request forwarded to them, and they cast the ballot they shouldn't. When we combine those numbers together for your state, and we merge, and we take out some that we estimate to have been military moves, which doesn't, they don't actually lose their ability to vote in the state, we came up with a total of about 5,700 or so, just Maricopa, just early absentees. We also identified a population of double voters. Now, what's unique about this is that, again, we're not, we're not looking at people who may be voted in person in California and voted by mail here. We're only able, because of limited data in many states, to compare early absentee voters to early absentee voters in other states. So, if they voted early absentee in Arizona, voted early absentee, for example, in California, they'd show up here. But if, if and when we get access to Election Day, voter lists will be able to, these numbers will inevitably go up. And also, we've got a lot of limitations on our ability to match. One of those limitations is the availability of full and accurate dates of birth from states on their voter lists. In a lot of cases, states will suppress that. And that, that prevents us from being able to get a successful match on somebody who moved out of state with a subsequent registration. Because for us, for our project, we can't be the Voter Integrity Project without integrity, and that requires a very tight match. So, we're sure it's not just somebody with the same name, or even somebody with the same name, born in the same year, but it's got to be day, month, year, exact, as best we can. And we actually try to match on cellphones, too, when we're able to do that. So, that's, that kind of concludes the initial findings that I wanted to share with you about, about your state in particular. And I'd be happy to take any questions, if you have them.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to ask this gentleman some questions?
You go ahead.
No? All right. Matt, I really appreciate you coming in. I know that you've, you flew in, I think, late last night to make a short and succinct presentation. Can you tell me, relative to the work that you've done, with certainty, how many votes were cast that should not have been? Just a high-level number, because obviously, for example, the Trump campaign would like to see 10,457 votes overturned. But, not to be exact, but are we there, based on the work that you've done? Because as we look at your work and the work of other people, we're starting to chip away at that number in a pretty serious way.
I would say there's two levels of confidence I have, okay? The first level of confidence is very, and I'm very confident that we get very close to that number when we take the residency issues, and then apply it to the other counties for which we weren't able to obtain data. The second level of confidence is where you take a number of projection, you go back out to low-activity analysis and NCO analysis, which I'm not going to get in the weeds, but these are basically people telling us that they had votes, that they didn't cast votes that were cast in their name. If you're comfortable projecting these numbers to the population that we were trying to reach via phone, that we just couldn't, I think then you reach another level of certainty that you're able to bridge that gap. So, I think that the, I'm, I have a high degree of confidence that the number of ballots that were cast that should not have been cast, illegal ballots, surpasses the margin of victory as it stands right now.
Thank you very much. Representative Mia Succi, you're the first to ask questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, second, I guess.
Yeah. Thank you, Matt, very much for your presentation. I just had a couple of questions. For the 44% that you said did not request an early ballot but got one, what, how many people did you poll to get that 44%?
Well, we started off, as you can see in the chart, or maybe you can't see, with a large number of unreturned ballots in your state, in Maricopa. And then we reached out, we were able to get a phone match to maybe a quarter million of those. The number we were able to reach by a phone is 2,044. The number who said they did not request that ballot was 902. Now, when your colleague asked me the question about how many, you know, what's the margin of illegally cast ballots, I don't apply any of this, but this does raise a lot of questions. And that, should a ballot be counted if somebody themselves did not actually request it?
Right. That's a very good, and that's, yeah, that's why I'm asking that question, absolutely. And then the 1%, was it the same?
That was among the, this is among our shot-in-the-dark, calling people on the phone to ask them, "Did you, did you actually cast the ballot?" Because their voting history suggested that they, well, that they hadn't voted very often, if at all. So, that's this universe that we decide to reach out to, and we just, we pulled a data load in your, in the state of your, in case of your state, of about 35,000.
The 1% of 35,000?
Right, but that, that universe could potentially have been much larger. I just wanted to give our phone center an amount to sort of chew on. And, you know, the numbers, again, we saw the video of Mr. Garrett. We never spoke to him. He doesn't show up in these numbers. He just got the voice message. And, you know, I got to tell you, the tremendous amount of courage for someone to do what he did, because when you come public, become public, come forward in a situation like this, willing to say that you may have been a victim of voter fraud, you're all in the public spotlight, right? You're used to this. But if you're just some guy who seems to be the victim of voter fraud, all the things that got to, have to go through your mind are, you're going to have a target on your back, you're going to have potential media trying to trash you, dox you.
Sure.
You know, you have to talk to your wife about it first, what impact can it have on your occupation, on your family? So, the willingness of him to actually go on television, I think, there's got to be so many more people that just, not that they didn't have his courage, but just their life conditions would not allow them to come forward as publicly as he did.
Yeah, and I think, I don't care if it's one voter that this happened to. I mean, it's illegal, right? And this is the problem. And the fact that even 1% of your 35,000, that should, that should scare everybody, that's even happening. So, I appreciate you getting the data. Thank you.
Senator Burelli? Representative Barto, any questions?
Just real quickly, I was wondering, you mentioned Arizona has more anomalies than other states. Were we the only ones that had this kind of anomaly compared to other states with the unrequested absentees?
That actually was a universal problem to all six states, to some degree, but I don't think any had it quite to the same degree as you did. I'll just consult my chart, but that was my recollection, yeah. It was, it was more, far more substantial in Arizona. And you, we, looking at all these different states, they actually all have their own unique things that kind of make them stand out a little bit. And this is something that was unique to Arizona that made it safe. Because, you know, in other states, they had serious problems in areas where you didn't have problems. But this was a problem that seemed to be more prominent here than we found it elsewhere.
Would you think that's a feature of, you know, absentee balloting is very popular here in our state? I mean, we've had it for years, and it's growing, and, you know, voter confidence in this, in the system had been growing until really there was more information about the vulnerabilities that have been coming to light, and the questions about that, would, do we compare, how do we compare with those other states?
Well, you're, I think you have a stronger history of absentee ballot voting here than the other states do. But I think what's important is that, like, I've got a phone center, I've got data analysts, I can request things from different commercial vendors in your state, Secretary of State, I can do it. But what I can't do is round up a posse and go around and find out, "Who requested this ballot if this person didn't? How did that happen?" I can't, it was done electronically, I can't track the IP addresses, I can't, I can't find the envelopes and, you know, that have arrived in and dusted for fingerprint. That's, that's something that's got to either be up to you guys, or the law enforcement in your state, or some other law enforcement agency. But getting the question in terms of, "Who cast Naishan Garrett's ballot? How did that happen?" Was it, was it clerical error, maybe, or signature verified? It wasn't just cast, it was signature verified. Something went wrong here. And it, I don't have the power to find that out. I can just present it to you guys and to others who have similar authority. But I'd really like to know the answer to that question. I don't think I'm alone.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mayor Giugliano, you had a couple of questions?
Yes, I do, sir. Just a few things that maybe I don't, I don't quite understand, but might be very helpful. The governor and the Secretary of State, I believe here today, certified the vote. It would, it would seem to me that the one thing that you can be sure of, whether there are enough votes to overturn the election or not, or that the vote count is inaccurate, the one that presently exists. Is that right?
I believe that unless the questions that I raise get answered, you can't be confident of what the vote count actually is, and no one can.
But the present one is very questionable.
It is extremely questionable.
Not subject to a declaration under perjury that is true and correct?
I, I agree.
Would you sign, would you sign a declaration that it was true and correct in a statement to the federal government?
I absolutely would not. I would probably go, I would put myself at risk of going to prison.
And if I were your lawyer, I would tell you not to do it. Could you, based on your expertise, if in fact, they hadn't been so hasty, or the legislature were to take the responsibility, could you conduct an audit in which you could come to a reasonable degree of certainty on how many illegal aliens voted?
Could you ask that question? The federal government actually makes available a database of people, not necessarily who are citizens, but the opposite, people who are illegal aliens, or green card holders, et cetera. And I actually have the document that a state would use to request that, to have that check done. And it's my intent, subsequent to this, because we've got other things flying around, but to pressure every state in the country to make this request of the federal government. And that request has to come from the Secretary of State's office. Now, what I don't know is, has the Secretary of State of this state ever made that request to balance their voter list up against that, to see who maybe is not qualified to cast a ballot? But that's an excellent question. That's, that's what I think they should do.
That is a good question. Want to make a bet?
I'm not a gambling man.
Betting outside of the casinos here is illegal, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's go across to Nevada, and we can do that. But seriously, with the number of illegal aliens in Arizona, in the, in the millions, it's almost beyond doubt that some voted. And the margin is so small, 10 million, that wouldn't you be duty-bound to conduct that study before you certified a winner in this election?
I would agree, and it's, so many things we can talk about that, that we shouldn't be happening at this hour. This is the kind of thing that the state should have done before Election Day, before a single ballot was cast, so remove the risk of contamination. And the, what's just as dangerous, I think, is the suspicion of contamination.
Right. Well, there's one study that was done that said 236,000 illegal aliens voted. I have no idea what their methodology was, or how they produced it, but if you had time to do it, could that be done with a degree of certainty with regard to the number, even if it were an estimate?
Well, to figure out the precise number is difficult, but to hold your voter list against what this federal government will provide and match, you'd be able to subtract a substantial number of the illegal immigrants, or not just illegal immigrants casting ballots, but I think as, probably as prominent, which may increase your numbers, are people who are green card holders.
Non-citizens.
Or other visas, where they are here legally, but...
It's a bigger universe, non-citizens.
It's a, non-citizens who are permitted to vote. So, yeah, it's a much bigger universe, and I could certainly do that analysis, but I could not do it without the signature of the Secretary of State on that letter to the federal government requesting access to that database. Because as you know, as many of these people know, it's very hard to figure out who actually is a citizen and who is not, or who's entitled to vote and who is not.
And how about the number of felons who voted that were not entitled to vote? That's been estimated at over 200,000 also. Would a, would a, would an audit of the voting list be able to assist in determining an approximate number?
The mechanics, the technical mechanics of an audit are easy. Getting the data of all the felons who would be ineligible, and not just complete data, not just that data, but you need to have full names, so, of dates of birth at least, and then have the reciprocal data from the state, which they should have, and if they don't, that's a huge problem. Because we've encountered many cases where the state, on their voter list, they've got like a blank, or they'll mark somebody as the default, like born on January 1st, the year 1900 or something. So, to be able to conduct that analysis is easy, but to get the resources or the data behind it to conduct it may be challenging, but the state has a better capability of doing it than anyone else. And if you want to retain me to do that, I'd be happy to send you an invoice.
And how about people from out of the state voting?
That's an analysis we did run, but again, our number's on extremely low side, because we, we needed to have a high degree of confidence. The state itself could probably do a much better job of doing that analysis, and other states would be able to find more people who we couldn't discover, having moved to other states based on real estate records, claiming the homestead tax exemption, which I think also established residency in another state, and just being able to do a much more vigorous match on voter lists. Because again, we, we only got what the state gave us. We don't have what the state itself has.
There was a poll that was published that said that non-citizens broke 80, 20 for Biden. How would someone do a poll like that?
You know, I would have to see what the sample sizes.
At least they made an attempt, at least they made an attempt to find out who were the non-citizens. It seems like the governor and the Secretary of State just don't want the facts.
I, I've actually worked for many pollsters. I actually used to work for Frank Luntz, and I think figuring out how to do a poll of non-citizens in an election they shouldn't be able to vote in is, that's got a very high degree of difficulty, but Biden's doing really well with that group. I don't know why.
But I would, but that sounds like a pretty sensible breakdown.
Yeah.
So, just to sum up, in addition to all the hundreds of thousands of ballots where Republicans were not allowed to observe... There was a poll that was published that said that non-citizens broke 80, 20 for Biden. How would someone do a poll like that?
You know, I would have to see what the sample sizes.
At least they made an attempt to find out who were the non-citizens. It seems like the governor and the secretary of state just don't want the facts.
I've actually worked for many pollsters. I actually used to work for Frank Luntz, and I think figuring out how to do a poll of non-citizens in an election they shouldn't be able to vote in is, that's got a very high degree of difficulty, but Biden's doing really well with that group. I don't know why.
But I would, that sounds like a pretty sensible breakdown.
Yeah.
So just to sum up, in addition to all the hundreds of thousands of ballots where Republicans were not allowed to observe while the Democrats dealt with them secretly, there are also the clear fact that non-citizens voted. The question is, how many? There's the clear fact that felons not entitled to vote voted, we just don't know how many. And that people from outside of Arizona voted, we just don't know how many. And in each case, the governor and the secretary of state put their names on the certification that the results were true and accurate, and never bothered to make a single effort to find out about these obvious areas that would change the numbers.
You know, in a municipal election this same year, I was working for the candidate, and one of my responsibilities was as poll watcher. And when it came time to open up the absentee ballots, I was sitting in the room and I made sure I could hear and see everything. And in one case, a name came up, and I had my list, and I raised my hand, I said, I object. That person doesn't live here, doesn't live in this city, shouldn't be able to vote here. They took his ballot out, they examined it, we had a conversation about whether he should or not, and they actually, that vote was invalidated, it was spoiled.
You must have been in a state that follows the law.
I was, in fact, but if you do not have the ability to do that, it undermines the credibility of any election result.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bernard. I appreciate it.
Members on the panel, any other questions for Mr. Bernard? Representative Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to ask you about the votes that you were talking about, that you could go in and you could find that stuff out, and I think we heard some misinformation, it wasn't 10 million, it's only 10,000 and some. And keep in mind, we don't need to find 10,000 votes, and I'm not saying we're for one person or the reverse to the other, but 5,500 votes would change an election. So when you look at the numbers that you have presented just right here, right, and you call in question of, I won by 10,000 votes, let's say, well, 5,500 votes would change the election. And so it's very alarming when I see your information up here that, and the voicemails that you've had, but thank you for your work.
To that point.
Representative Kansing?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And to that point, there wasn't just one election here in Arizona, there was many. And we lost one seat in the Senate by a very slim margin. So I think it's important to remember that we're not just looking at this for one person's election, and Arizonans have a right to have representation on a clean, fair election. And your information's quite shocking. That would have changed the outcome of several elections here in this state, so I think an audit is warranted.
Mr. Bernard, I just, I've been trying to refrain from commenting, but I'm going to tell you that you have just shone a light on something that confirms, I think, for all of us, that this is not an illusory issue. We have seen, this is hard, you know, somebody asked, where's the smoking gun and I want to see the blood splatter? There it is. All right? So thank you very much, sir. I appreciate your testimony. So our next witness is Dr. Shiva, and we're going to see what we can do to bring this in by way of Zoom. And I'm going to turn over the screen to Dr. Shiva. Oops, no, don't want to share that. And I think you need to unmute yourself, Dr. Shiva.
Yes, I'm unmuted. What I do need is, I need the ability to share.
The ability to share, you are getting way above my ability to run Zoom. Let's see, screen, oh, wait a minute. Is there anybody here? Multiple participants can share simultaneously. That's probably it. How about now?
Great.
Please proceed, sir.
Okay, good afternoon. My name is Dr. Shiva Iadure. One of my expertises is in the field called pattern recognition and mathematical analysis, so I'll try to keep it brief. But the objectives of this study were pretty focused to essentially perform an initial analysis on Maricopa County, and to identify any anomalies and to provide an explanation for those anomalies. So that's what this, today's discussion is focused on. At a very high level, many people probably know these numbers. If you look at the, about 2.6 million people registered to vote in Maricopa County, in this election, 80.5% of them cast ballots, as you can see there. And this is not showing the data for, let's say, the independent or green parties, but 49.8% went to Biden and 47.6% to President Trump. So that was the reported results from the secretary of state. The other important thing to note is that, just to get it, one of the important features that you can look at in an election is a distribution of votes by party affiliation. So in this case, there was 35.3% of Republicans who voted, 31.3% of Democrats, 32.3% of independents, a small percentage of libertarians. That gives a total distribution. We'll come back to this, why this is important in this analysis. So what I want to first begin by having people put their attention on this chart, what this is, is we're literally taking all the data provided by the secretary of state across the 743 precincts in Maricopa County, and we're literally recreating the election. And there are two curves here. One is the curve for President Trump, which is a red curve, and the blue curve is the curve for Mr. Biden. And as we move from left to right, what we're doing is we're starting with precincts which have low number of votes to precincts which have high number of votes, and we're literally counting the vote totals and summing them up together. When you get to the end here, you get the actual election results, so 49% for Mr. Biden and 47.6% for Mr. Trump. So these curves, in many ways, show the dynamic of the election as you move from the precincts from low vote counts to high, and you're essentially adding them up. So when you look at this curve, in pattern recognition and pattern analysis, one of the things you try to understand is anomalies and the normal condition. So this is what we're calling the normal condition. In science, we'd call it the control. And we're literally looking at two important features. There's a shape of this curve, and there's the sequence in how this curve's developed. So in the analysis here, what we wanted to do was, we wanted to see if we can reproduce the curve for President Trump and the curve for Mr. Biden by looking at the demographic of voters based on party affiliation. Because that's one of the most, you know, easily accessible, or one of the most prominent features in an election. So towards this, we initially did an initial analysis of part, looking at voter turnout in a precinct, percent voter turnout. So every dot here represents a particular precinct, and you're looking at the percent voter turnout in a precinct along the y-axis, and along the x-axis, simply the percent registered Republicans in a precinct. And what's interesting is you see a positive correlation, the more percentage of Republicans in a precinct, in fact, voter turnout is going up. Alternatively, when we looked at the percentage voter turnout in a precinct by percent registered Democrats in a precinct, you see a negative relationship as the percentage of Democrats in a precinct increases, each blue dot is a precinct, you see a negative correlation with voter turnout. And similarly, we see the same behavior in the registered independents in a precinct. Voter turnout, and you see the negative correlation. So in summary, for Republicans, where the percent turnout positively correlates with percentage registered Republicans in a precinct, for Democrats and independents, the percent turnout negatively correlates with percent registered Democrats and percent registered independents in precincts. So that's just giving you the feature of what was taking place in Maricopa County. Now, getting back to this, we have the capability, the computer affords us the opportunity to do what we call scenario testing. What are the potential scenarios of distribution of Republicans, Democrats, independents, libertarians, and Greens? That if you were to look at the potential infinite possibility of spaces, we haven't done all of them, but in the time that we have, what are the percentages of distributions of voters that would give rise to produce President Trump's curve here? And what are the percentages that would give rise of those allocations of Republicans, Democrats, independents, Greens, and libertarians to give rise to Mr. Biden's percentage? And the reason we want to do this is to look at the plausibility of these results. Is it plausible that you could have some reasonable distribution of Democrats, Republicans, independents, Green to generate this very particular slope and these curves to get this net result? And remember, again, we're going from precincts from left to right, we're accumulating votes, so this is really 743 different data points. So we first did, just to give you an idea, this is one of the potential scenarios, where we're looking at, in the case of Democrats, we're looking at a split of votes between Mr. Biden and Trump of 20% to 80%, of Republicans between 80% to 20%, and of the independents, 70, 30, libertarians, 0, 100, and Green, 100, 0s. This is one of the computer simulations. Like this, a computer can do far better than I could do sitting here. And what you see is, the green line is trying to match Mr. Biden's blue line, and you can see it's way off. And the purple line is trying to match the red line. So obviously, these aren't matching, because again, we wanted to see if we could overlay on those. So here's another potential scenario. In this case, we're looking at Biden-Trump voter distribution of Democrats by 80, Republican 20, 80, the independents 30, 60, libertarians 10, 90, 100, 0. And in this case, the blue line here, the purple line here is at least nearer the red line, and the green line is getting closer to Mr. Biden. So again, the green and the purple are the simulated versions. Then we do another example. Well, this is getting a little bit closer. We see 100% Democrat, 0% Trump for Democrat distribution relative to Republicans, 20, 80 split, 36% 58% on the independents, and so on. But it's still not matching, even though it's getting close here, you notice the slopes aren't matching. Well, we try a different case, 100% Democrat, 0% Biden-Trump, Republican 0, 100, and so on. Still doesn't match. This iteration process, again, the computer was done, and the only one that we were able to come close to matching was this. And I want everyone to look at this carefully. So out of all the, you know, potential universe, which we've done, and we're going to continue doing this, by no means is this done, we find that the interesting possibility we find here is when the Democrat percentage is 130% Mr. Biden and negative 30% Mr. Trump, and the Republican percentage is 0, 100, the independent is 30%, 58%, libertarian 0, 60, 60, 0. But what's extraordinary about this graph, again, you know, we went through many, many, many iterations, it matches perfectly, near perfectly. The slopes match, the curve is matched, the shape matched. So what just tells us is that this demographic distribution of allocation of party affiliations is what can generate this. And I find it highly implausible, because this means that Mr. Biden got 130% of Democrat voters and negative 30%, and President Trump got negative 30%. So how is this possible? So how is this quote-unquote result possible? Well, one possibility could be there's a demographic within the independent voters, which is this group here, okay, this 38, 58%, not visible in our model who voted for Biden. Again, we would need to get more access to data, which is, by the way, very difficult to get access to. Another possibility is that Mr. Biden's actual votes were multiplied by 1.3, which is 130%, meaning each single vote Mr. Biden received, each single vote he actually received became 1.3 reported votes. Sort of, there was an increase in a weighting of a vote that was given to Mr. Biden, and President Trump's votes are reduced by that 0.3 or 30% gained by Mr. Biden. Simply put, you could call this vote swapping. And/or there could be a combination of both. So that's what we have discovered today, but this combination, out of all the possibilities to match this curve perfectly, is the only one we've found so far. And the demographic distribution that it asserts seems highly implausible, but again, we need to do more research. One is, again, as I mentioned, that there could be certain groups of independent voters that are not visible in the model, or it could be vote swapping, or all three. And I'll end on that note.
All right, Dr. Shiva. I'm looking at Mr. Giuliani, and I see he's been scratching some things out here. I'm pretty sure you have a question or two.
I do, sir.
Please, sir.
Doctor, it's Rudy Giuliani, how are you?
How are you, Mayor Giuliani?
Can I just ask you, how did you get to that calculation where Trump received minus 30% of the Democrat vote? Can you explain to us in a way that we can understand how you got to that calculation?
Sure. So let me go back to it, if I can go back to it. So think of this, Mayor Giuliani, as a, this is, if you think about this, this is the actual, this is a curve that represents the actual vote, what's called the cumulative vote count for Mr. Biden and President Trump. Okay? So this is the control. This is what actually occurred on election night. Does that make sense? And what we're attempting to do in mathematics, using mathematics, you can do what's called curve fitting, where you can change certain variables to attempt to fit this curve. The variables we are changing here, which cannot be done, you know, manually, but the computer is essentially changing the possibilities of different levers, a percentage of Democrats who voted for President Trump, the percent of Democrats who voted for Mr. Biden, the percent of Republicans who voted for Biden, the percent of Republicans who voted for Trump, the percent of independents who voted for Biden, the percent of independents who voted for Trump, and so on. So it's a solving, where remember in algebra, where you could multiply variables by different equations, and you're trying to match this curve. So the computer is doing this, Mayor Giuliani, and so that's why I'm showing you this different possibilities. Now, there's hundreds of thousands that the computer's running through to figure out what possible, as you can see, what possible combination of these would lead to this. And the only one we were able to find was this. I hope that explains it. We're looking at the computer trying to find combinations of these vote allocations that could perfectly reproduce this result.
So a vote for Biden would actually be 1 and 1/3 vote. Is that correct?
Yeah, 1 and 3/10ths, right.
1 and 3/10ths. 1 and 3/10ths, and a vote for Trump would be 1.
A vote for Trump would be whatever the president got, if he got 100 votes, reduced by 30% of what Mr. Biden got. Basically, the president's vote is linked to the vote that Mr. Biden got. So if Biden got 100 votes and his went up by 1.3, which means it took 30% of the votes were reduced, that would go to President Trump. So basically, votes are being eaten from President Trump and handed over to Mr. Biden. That's the only way, one possibility of explaining.
Did you discuss this at all with Colonel Walzren?
I received a text message from this earlier, and in preparation for this, I wasn't able to get to him, but I'm willing to discuss that with him.
Well, he reached a very similar conclusion in a different way, that the votes for Biden were valued by, within the computer algorithm, as higher than the votes for Trump. Could you accomplish that within a computer, a computer that you had gotten control of?
Well, one of the important things to recognize is, is that what we do know is, starting in 2002, Mayor Giuliani, that these voting vendors, it was brought out in one of the D-Bolt manuals, have a feature called a weighted race feature. The weighted race feature, it's a documented feature. And the weighted race feature is, basically says that you, the feature in the software, which the secretaries of state have certified knowingly, or maybe unconsciously, but they must have certified these electronic voting system software, has a feature called a weighted race feature, which allows a voter's vote to be, or a candidate's votes to be multiplied. So what that means is, the central principle that, you know, Justice Earl Warren ruled on in 1964, one person, one vote, or clarified that can be violated. It can be one person, not one vote. And that is one explanation of this. But the important feature, I think, people in the public need to understand is, the software system... software systems, the electronic voting software systems, have a documented feature called a weighted race feature. So the implementation of this is very possible. In fact, it's a documented feature, starting as early as 2002.
Is there any reason for that? Any legitimate reason? Don't you want to count every, don't you want to count every vote as one?
Every vote should be counted as one vote, but the fact that a weighted race feature exists should be a serious concern to all of America, because it basically means that all of us have been going, you know, we're going back to Dred Scott, where it means that all of us, in some ways, the ubiquity of unfairness, where at that time it was 3/5 of a vote, where we could all become, you know, 1/3 of a vote. In this case, the people voted for President Trump, approximately, we're becoming 7/10 of a vote.
Do you know if the Dominion machines have that weighted vote feature?
As I understand, they do have this feature. And remember, the most more important thing to also understand is, our votes are stored not as whole integer numbers, but as decimal fractions, which means when you get a vote, if a candidate gets 100 votes, it's not stored as 100, it's 100.0215, which is also quite alarming, which means if that, the fact that the votes are stored as decimal fractions means you could have external programs intersect, you know, communicate with those programs and alter them using external software programs, which could also do weighted race features. But the important element here is that there's documented features of the weighted race features, as early as 2002, and our votes are stored as decimal numbers.
Would I be overly simplistic if I concluded the only reason you would want a machine with a weighted vote feature is in order to cheat?
It's enabling cheating. It's an enabling of one person, not one vote.
I mean, this is not a poll.
That's what the feature enables.
This is not a poll, this is an absolute vote. And the only reason to have that feature would be if you're going to distort the vote.
Exactly.
Wow. Do you know what a Monte Carlo is?
Excuse me, Mayor Giuliani?
Did you do a Monte Carlo where you can do millions of possibilities in a minute to find a good match?
Yes, so that's what this is doing. There are many different techniques. The solver technique here, there are many different numerical methods, but essentially, it's doing one of those kinds of approaches to find that fit.
And that's how you arrived at the one that you felt was the closest?
Yes.
And could you say with a degree of professional certainty that there's no question that this vote count in Arizona is faulty, false, not accurate, whatever words are comfortable?
Well, I think what I can say is that the plausibility of that, you know, the cumulative vote count, as we see it progress, is highly implausible. The caveat being, we don't have certain data on the, you know, the, what percentage of demographics of independent voters, but from everything we've run in the simulations we run, it's highly implausible, the pattern of voting we saw that was reported by the Secretary of State of Arizona in Maricopa County.
Thank you, Doctor. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Members, any questions for Dr. Shiva? Any questions? Representative Cook, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a question for the doctor. So earlier, we had heard from a state senator, I believe, and in his presentation, when it had the vote totals, it had a decimal point and then numbers after. And so this perfectly makes sense, if what you're saying is, one vote is one vote, two votes is two votes. But if there's some way, there's something added to it electronically to have a weighted vote as a 1.25, so every vote for this person is a 1.25, would that be the way those decimal points got there?
Well, yeah. I mean, the issue is, why are our votes being stored not as whole integers versus what we're called floating point variables in computer science or in math, right? So when a developer writes a program, it should be very important, and I've been programming for many, many years, and the first thing you learn is, when you are writing a software program, you have to be extremely conscious on how you're declaring variables, right? This variable is an integer, which means it can only be, you know, 0, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. This variable is going to be a decimal, which is also called a float or a double, which means it can be 1.1, 1.3, so on. So the fact that the vote count is stored as a decimal, to me, when I first learned about this in my own senate race here in Massachusetts, was quite disconcerting, because this means that consciously, people are putting into the software a capability to have fractional voting. And that's what this leads to. And why is there such a feature or capability, and why are our votes even being stored as fractions or decimals? And I think this is probably the central question of our time, probably going back to, you know, the 3/5 compromise of 1787. Do we have one person, one vote, or do we have one person, not one vote? And in the era of electronic software systems, I think the courts need to step in and reclarify one person, one vote, going back to 1964, the equal protection clause of the United States Constitution.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we've got a lot of ground to cover here, so I appreciate your passion, but can we just keep the applause to, let's wait until we're done. Senator Borelli, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I'm not surprised, it's pretty much the modus operandi of the Democrat history anyway, to have a poll tax and actually tax Republican to that vote goes to a Democrat. So that's what they did. They took that 30% and, or 0.3, whatever, taxed a Republican vote and sent it over to the Democrats. So I'm not surprised that the Democrats would want to tax the vote.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Members, any other questions?
I wasn't finished.
I'm sorry?
I wasn't finished, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please proceed, Mr. Cook, I thought you were done.
Thank you. I just wanted to finish up with what we were going to talk about. So now that we understand, with the two witnesses that we've heard here today, how those decimal points get sent there, and Doctor's done a wonderful job, the question I have, Mr. Chairman, is, Doctor, is, when did you find this information about where the lines transected? At what point in time were you made aware of it? That's the first part of the question. And the second part of the question is, who have you made aware of this? Have you made the Secretary of State of Arizona aware of this, or the Governor's Office, or Attorney General's aware of this? Or is it just been the privileged information of the Trump team until now, just about the state of Arizona, so we keep it short?
No, this was discovered about 24 hours to 48 hours ago. You're the first ones to actually see these graphs presented today.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your time.
Representative Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a quick question built off of a comment. Sidney Powell had mentioned some conflicts of interest with Dominion and these systems. She had said, her words, "Governors and secretaries of states and other politicians have invested interests in this system." I read from last year an article where Nancy Pelosi's former chief of staff sat on the board of the lobbying firm that represents Dominion. If you're, what you're telling us is true, and there is some kind of interest by certain politicians to invest in this kind of a system, and I find it ironic that today is Cyber Monday, and we're talking about this type of issue. Have you looked at that, of any kind of a nefarious background, when you see, when you're looking at these weighted votes? Do you have any indication or any suspicion, or is this just a mistake or a fluke in data? Does this lend to her claim that there might be some nefarious motives behind the system?
It's a very, very good question you bring up. Let me give you from my own actual experience in this, you know, in, I ran for U.S. Senate in the Republican primary in Massachusetts, and I was deeply shocked when I found out that this weighted race feature existed. And pursuant to that, we issued FOIA's to actually get access to some very important data, which helps us connect, to validate whether the weighted race feature was on. And that is called the ballot images, the cast vote records, and it's called the list vote records. Now, what are those things? When you put a ballot into a machine, a paper ballot, and that machine is scanned, that machine creates what's called an image, a photograph. And when tabulation takes place, guess what's tabulated? Not the paper, in the electronic voting machines, the actual images. Does that make sense? So the images are tabulated. So when you get a result, if you want to validate the integrity of that result, the output, we must have access to the ballot images, and, because the ballot images are used to generate the cast vote records and the list vote records, which are the actual counts of votes that were gotten. So when, in Massachusetts, for example, I applied for a FOIA to get this, the secretaries of state of Massachusetts, and I believe this may be true in many secretaries of state across the country, they responded back to me, saying they deleted the ballot images. In fact, they destroy them, that they don't have to save them by state law. And it is my understanding pursuant to USC 20701 and 20702, for federal elections, those ballot images must be saved in order to validate the integrity of the election. Well, in my case, when I started sharing this on Twitter, on September 25th, the Secretary of State of Massachusetts contacted Twitter and shut me down for 21 days left in my election. And what came out in testimony in Massachusetts with a federal judge here, was that the Secretary of State of Massachusetts has a special partnership with Twitter, where they were able to brand what I was sharing, that ballot images were destroyed as election misinformation. And in addition, they called the National Association of State Election Directors, NASED, which is the association of all the state election directors, and they too got involved in contacting Twitter to shut down my tweets where I was exposing that ballot images, which were destroyed, which read the evidence showing that the weighted race feature was on. It was quite extraordinary. Well, the NASED is the group of all state election directors. So why was my tweet, when Twitter had not shut me off when I was talking about election fraud, but the state of Massachusetts Secretary of State and the state election directors found it threatening? Because what I was essentially stating was that the state election directors of a number of these states are concealing the actual evidence, which directly correlates, which can expose where the weighted race feature was on. So yes, I do believe it's nefarious. And if you go look at the National Association of State Election Directors, which is a nonprofit, they are funded, and that they're entity of Democracy Works. Democracy Works is funded by Rockefeller Brothers, it is also funded by the Murdochs, Catherine Murdoch. And you can look at, who is actually controlling the state election directors, or what community are they part of? Now, why is this important? Because the state election directors and the secretaries of state are the ones who certify voting, electronic voting systems. Which means, are they certifying electronic voting systems knowingly with the weighted race feature? And in my view, I know in Massachusetts, that's what was done. And knowingly telling people, turning, telling the vendors to delete ballot images, which are the evidence that interconnect the weighted race features being on, and the ballot images. So in Massachusetts, the factory settings of these electronic voting machines, the default factory setting is to save all ballot images. What we discovered in Massachusetts is they tell the vendors to set that to off, which means delete, destroy all ballot images. And I believe that many of these secretaries of state are involved in this. So yes, I believe it is nefarious.
Thank you. And just as a follow-up, I believe, and I was told recently that in Maricopa County with the machines and the Dominion, that in the RFP request for the procurement, that it says you are able to, this allows you to publish the images, and that we were requesting that those be published, and we have been denied that. So I'm in communication with the Board of Supervisors to see, is it possible to go ahead and put that up? So I would recommend the public also get involved in demanding to be able to see those, because, you know, apparently we have leaders in the state elbow bumping today in celebration of the certification of this election. And clearly, what you're saying, we should be doing anything but. It's abhorrent, it's a shameful thing, it's a sad day in Arizona that we're celebrating the certification of this election.
Mr. Giuliani, do you have any follow-up questions you'd like to ask?
I would just like the doctor to state his credentials.
Dr. Shiva, would you please state your credentials?
Sure. My name is Dr. Shiva Idray. I hold four degrees from MIT. My undergraduate is in electrical engineering and computer science. I have two other masters. One is in scientific visualization from the MIT Media Lab, my master's. I also hold another master's from MIT in mechanical engineering, and my PhD is in a field called computational systems biology. You know, and when I was 14 years old, I created the first email system while working as a full-time research fellow at Rutgers Medical School. And I, at that time, I began trying to understand sleep patterns in babies, why babies were dying in their sleep, and looking at patterns of signals to detect the anomalous signal and a normal signal. So the common thread throughout my entire life, from the age of 14 till today, has been pattern analysis being applying it to detect sleep patterns, handwriting recognition, speech recognition, face analysis, understanding the analysis of signals to detect flaws in, you know, aircraft wings of airplanes or bridges. But pattern recognition is my field of expertise. And so what I just shared with people today is using that expertise to understand an anomalous situation, a implausible situation relative to normal situations. But in addition to my academic training, my industry background across the seven companies I've done is starting companies and running companies, which focus on pattern analysis, pattern recognition, a whole host of industries. But that's my background, Mayor Giuliani.
Quite impressive.
Thank you, Dr. Shiva. And frankly, I, this is just an observation so far, we have heard a couple of terms thrown around, and I think rather carelessly, and I think you've put a very fine point on it. One is, these machines are supposed to tabulate, they're not supposed to calculate. They're just supposed to count, one for one. And I think you've put a very fine point on the notion that these aren't tabulation machines, these are machines to calculate, and were built to do so. So I just want to thank you very much for making yourself available to us.
You're welcome.
And we appreciate your time. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Be well.
I think we've lost Dr. Shiva. Okay. Next up, we have Mr. Bobby Pitten. If you would, please, Mr. Pitten, come up to the table here, announce your name, who you're with, give like a, just a 10 seconds of what you're going to show us, and if you can, we are running short on time, so brevity...
It will be a half hour.
Brevity is our friend. Thank you very much.
I'll try to go as quickly as possible. First of all, thank you very much for taking the time to hold this hearing, and I appreciate having the opportunity to speak. So thank you very much. I'd like to start by saying, just quoting something from the Federalist Papers, which was written over 200 years ago, it was item number 68. "Nothing was more to be desired than that every practical obstacle should be opposed to cabal, intrigue, and corruption. These most deadly adversaries of Republican government might naturally have been expected to make their approaches from more than one quarter, but chiefly from the desire in foreign powers to gain an improper ascendant in our councils. In my humble opinion, upon reviewing all the data that I'm going to go over, and reading countless articles, clips, and videos over the past week, I think this is the biggest fraud in the history of our constitutional republic, is taking place right before our eyes. The corrupt mainstream media and tech oligarchs are colluding in an attempt to assassinate the American public's true legal vote for our President Donald J. Trump through corrupt government officials across countless precincts and corrupt state officials and courts. The evidence will show that President Trump surpassed both FDR and Reagan in the percentage of legal votes, topping 60% when this crime is unveiled. So much of this process has been tainted, that it will likely end up before the Supreme Court and allow one electoral vote per state cast, and hopefully Arizona does its part. And eventually, the 35 of the 50 states will probably vote Republican, which will probably match his popular vote totals." So with that said, I'm going to, so basically, what I've identified is that there's between 120,000 and 306,000 fake people. And I did this by looking at the data, and I'm not going to go over this sheet just yet, I want to kind of just highlight the bigger picture so that, because, you know, numbers... I want to kind of just highlight the bigger picture so that, because, you know, numbers can be, I love numbers, but they can be a little boring. So I want to kind of tell the story to the numbers. But basically, what I did is I took a completely different approach than what's been presented up to this point, based on the little that I've heard here, is there's approximately 1,500 precincts in Arizona. And there's three classifications for male, female, and then U. I guess maybe that's the undecided classification. And then there's five different types of voters. There's one, two, three, four, five. Hard Republican, moderate swing, moderate Democrat, hard Democrat. So there's five categories. And what I did is I looked through the age rolls, so 18 to 100, and I basically created a unique bucket, so to speak, for each of those classifications. So it turns out there's about 980,000-plus unique Arizona voters. And the way I, what I did is I didn't look at the total, I looked at the number of registered voters in the state. Because if the core dataset is flawed, everything else that happens afterwards is irrelevant, in my opinion. Because, you know, so I kind of took an approach of how is the thing constructed? It was a very tedious process to organize all this. But then, once I got that organized, I broke out all of the male 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 votes. So I want you to think about like, okay, there's five classifications of male voters in the state of Arizona. I summed up and looked at how many of those votes by age, 18-year-olds, 19-year-olds, 20-year-olds, across all those different categories. And then, I did the same thing for females. And then, I did the same thing for the U's. And this is, it was absolutely mind-boggling what popped out as a result of this incredibly tedious process. The correlation of men that voted in Arizona, so the first category, one, you know, the number-one voter versus two, one versus three, one versus four, one versus five, and then, you know, making sure that all possible combinations of male voters was accounted for. The average of those correlations for male voters is approximately 63.83%. That makes sense. Because, you know, people, people as they age, they're kind of random. They may fall into, you know, maybe they're liberal one time, maybe they're conservative the other time, they kind of bounce around. And the variation, the standard deviation is very high, as it should, people's life cycle changes. It's about 30%. So then I did the same thing for females. Now, I mean, I can ask a silly question, but I said, no, my wife told me no jokes. But, you know, I'll get to the punchline. Do women, are women more predictable than men when it comes to voting? Are they more independent? Now, first, you know, people's first answer seems to be, oh, they'll do more of what, you know, their correlation should be higher. And actually, the opposite is true. They're at about 58%. So about six points higher, six points lower in terms of the correlation doing the same analysis. And that makes sense because most women don't want to tell you what they're doing when they go in the voting booth. So, that's the joke. But anyways, so then, what I did is I did the same thing for the U's. Now, keep in mind, there's a total...
Bobby, excuse me, when you say U's, you're talking about undisclosed, not Utes, as in younger?
Utes. Yeah, I like that, from my cousin Vinnie. Hey, there you go.
I'm glad you got the joke, Mr. Mayor.
The two Utes. So what is a Ute? But, so basically, once I did, once I did that, there's 463,000, 463,660 classified that I found under this category. I did that same analysis. Now, keep in mind, the standard deviation for men was about 32.8%. For women, it was 35.77%. That there would be a lot of randomness through time across the aging process of human beings. With regards to the U, when I did that same analysis, 94% plus correlation. Let me say that again. 94% correlation. And I was like, this is insane. Like, this is like fictitious. It's like this, and now, keep in mind, this was come up, I came up with this by going through all 1,500 precincts and unbundling all the data, age by age, across their sexual, you know, the MF and U, and then also, what type of voter were they? So this is, and I happen to love data, so this was fun for me. Because I'm like, I have an idea of what they're, how they're cheating. I think they're cheating. So I'm going to test this theory out, and I'm more than happy to provide this to Mayor Giuliani. And so, it was 94%. So then the next thing I did, I was like, oh, well, I want to see if something's wrong with the data, what should I do to make sure that I'm not wrong with this? Because I don't, I don't want to embarrass myself. So what I did is I took the buckets and I computed, what does the distribution look like per age? So like, okay, how many, when I, when I look at, hold on a second here. When I look at the buckets, how many U's are there in the first type of voter, second, third, fourth, fifth? And what I found is, there's about 14,000 across time, 14,225, and on the type-one Republicans. There's 122,203 type-twos. But what's fascinating is it's almost symmetrical on the type-fours. So 120,000. And I'm like, I asked my son, I'm like, hey, what do you think in terms of the U's? If you're conservative, are you more likely to go unclassified, or, you know, just throw that in, or fill it out based on your sex? He's like, you fill it out based on your sex. So it's like, so then I looked at that data, and I found that it's a bell-shaped curve. So if you looked at the ages and you went from 100 down to 18, the curve of the data is a nice bell shape. In the middle is 186,202 swing voters. The wings are 122,000 type-two, 120,000 type-four, and 14,000 type-one, and 20,000 type-five. But here's the kicker. When I start, when I'm like, okay, let's unpack each year, so the 18-year-olds, the 19-year-olds, what's that look like? When I do that, and I ran a max function, so it's like, obviously, zero is the min. And then what's the maximum number of U votes in any given precinct in Arizona? So, fair enough. I'm trading the markets, I like to see what's the min-max, what's the range. I run that number, and then I ran the correlation of the maxes versus the, hold on a second, versus what the, what the average number of votes per age group took place, and I ran that correlation. And would you believe it? It's over 97%? So, it's like, holy cow, I think I reverse engineered the algorithm that they're using to do these damn votes. But unless you're willing to create 980,000 buckets, you know, you're going to have a hard time seeing it. Because everybody's used to doing the data, you know, bundle it up, only look at the type-one, look at the type-two, you know? And they, and this algorithm, I mean, basically what the data is showing, and you, I think, frankly, this is a call-out to our President Trump, please, 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 do this for the entire country. I think we deserve an audit of every county in America after seeing this. And so, so basically, when I, so now I'd like to go, before I even started this minutia project, that's what I call it, the minutia project, this took me over 25 hours to do, I decided, you know, I like to look at metadata. So metadata, you guys should look into it if you don't know what it is, I don't want to get into a philosophical discussion about it. But metadata is, I said, okay, if I landed in Arizona, I want to understand what's been going on in Arizona before I say anything. And I pulled back, on your website, you have 22 years of election results, going back to 1998. So this is what's up here. And what I did is, I think I'm using this, is that me? Okay. So, so basically, what I did is I went to the census, and I pulled the census data on Arizona by each county. So I looked at, I looked at 2000, I looked at 2010, I looked at the estimate for 2019. And then you can see, I calculated what the annualized growth rate of each county was, and then what the, what the growth rate was from 2000 to 2010, which is column B, then I looked at column C, which is, you know, what was it from 2010 to 2019? And I extrapolated the data for one more year because we don't have the 2020 results. So I kind of went through this whole process, and I did that before the minutia, and I wanted to see like, okay, well, what's this, what does the census say with regards to how many people are of voting age? So I scroll down, you could see over here, you know, right now, for example, 27% of Apache is, you know, is under the age of 18. This is, once again, I didn't use any of my own data, I used government data. So if there's a problem, take it up with the government. So, so basically, I computed what is the number of voters per year. Now, keep in mind, since the census doesn't come out every year, I had to fill in based on the annualized growth rate between each census, and kind of adjust it accordingly. Because I don't want to just spitball it, I want it to be tied to the math and make sure that each year filled out. So then, from there, I went in and physically typed in all of the reported eligible voters each year. Because, I got to tell you, Arizona does not make it easy to standard, you know, to pull down the data in each county. Like, or, anyways, I had to, I had to go physically do this, which is, which is time-consuming, but I thought it was extremely important for what I was asked to do. So I did that, and then I did the reported ballots cast, and then I did that each year for 20, you know, each of the two-year cycles. And then I typed in the number of precincts that were reported. And then, as I kind of do that, you know, I came up with reported eligible voters as a percentage of total population. Once I did that, registered eligible voters as a percentage of voting-age population. So here's where it gets interesting. So I kind of did that, and I'm like, okay. I concur with Dr. Shiva that I think voting fraud has been happening in this state and possibly nationwide much longer than the past four years. I'm looking at the data, and it looks as though it's going back to at least 2008.
What are you guys going to do about it?
I don't know.
Okay.
It's above my pay grade.
If we have any more of that, we'll ask to have you removed from the room. I've asked several times, please hold your comments. We've been okay with some applause, but the purpose of this hearing is to gather information. Let me be really clear about that. Mr. Pitten, if you can, I need to have you wrap this up within the next couple of minutes, okay?
I will. I'll wrap it up right now. Can I grab one of these waters, though?
Big pardon?
Is that?
Yeah, help yourself.
So, so basically, what I did is I looked at the 2000 presidential election, 2004, 2008. And I looked at all the eligible voters, and that's in column S here, and I said, okay, how many eligible voters showed up to vote in those three presidential cycles? Then I tied it to 2008, '12, '16 as a pivot. And I said, wow, it went from 79% in Apache to 86.93%. But then, the change from the average of 2008, '12, '16 presidential cycle went from 87% to 99% of all eligible voters in Apache voted in 2020, is what the data, is, you know, that's how many, that's how many registered voters there are. It's like, what? 99%? So, since I'm in a little bit of a rush, I went through and did that for each of the counties and showed what the results look like in each respective presidential year, the three years, and then the off-years, to compare those two, those two numbers. And the correlation, once again...
The difference between those two years...
The difference between those two years, if it's a presidential cycle versus a regular cycle, there's about an 88% correlation. That should give you some idea of how meaningful that 94% was.
And so, I went through and did that.
I went through and did that.
And then I did the same thing with the ballots cast as a percentage of total population, and ballots cast as a percentage of Arizona population, and a couple of things I want to highlight, since I'm running out of time. The population of Arizona has gone up by about 1% per year the past decade. The number of people voting per year has gone up by about 7% per year. Now, that may not seem like a big deal.
It may not seem like a big deal. But if you had $100,000, and you invested it at 1% after a decade, you'd have $111,000.
But if you had $100,000 versus $11,000...
But if you had $100,000 and you invested it at 7% for a decade, you'd have $195,000.
So it's like, wait a second.
So it's like, wait a second. How is it that, you have $195,000 versus $11,000?
So when you look at the differential world rates...
So when you look at differential world rates, that's how meaningful it is, that this has been occurring, going back a decade.
It's almost like a little...
Somebody was maybe cheating a little bit somewhere, and then they needed to cheat a little bit more, and then they needed to cheat a little bit more. And the reason why I say this is, you know, being in the financial markets my whole career, Sarbanes-Oxley, remember that? Everybody remember WorldCom? WorldCom and Enron? They had to sign, the CFO and the CEO have to sign the financials, the 10K and 10Q, which is enforced since the '33 and 1934 Securities Act. Guess who was exempted from that act? Counties and states. Maybe they should be not exempted anymore. If you're going to sign something when billions of dollars are on the line, we should believe in the data. We have the CEOs get clawed back, we get the CFOs jail time. So if you cheat, there should be repercussions. And the laws are on the books for this. All we have to do is, here, I'll give you an example. If you're a CEO of a company, it's worth $20 billion, and there's a fraud internally, and somebody steals a billion, if you don't prosecute them and you don't uncover it and investigate it, you're violating your fiduciary responsibility, you're going to get fired, you're going to get sued, and investors are going to take you through the wringer. But for some reason in politics, that doesn't happen, which is, which is mind-boggling, because this country's worth $100 trillion. This election about controlling $100 trillion of wealth in the United States is very serious business. And so, this is one of the reasons, you know, so I'm kind of wrapping it up here because I know you asked me to cut it short.
Mr. Pitten, can we like do 60 seconds?
60 seconds.
I think there, Mr. Giuliani may have a question for you.
Okay. So, the population of Arizona has gone up by 40% since 2000. The number of voters in 1998 in Arizona was 1.1 million. It's 3.2 million today. So it's like tripled, but the population's up 40%. Something's off.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Giuliani?
If you could just tell us in your, in the simplest way possible, as an expert, what is your opinion as to the validity of the numbers that were certified today by the Secretary of State and the Governor about this election?
If I was an executive at a publicly traded company, I would never sign that because I risk jail time and having all my money taken from me in lawsuits. So, to answer your question, I would never, ever have certified. I'd rather resign than have certified those results.
So your professional opinion is that the numbers are fraudulent?
I believe they're fraudulent based on the data, and my sister asked me a simple question this morning. She goes, how sure are you? And my sister's a pretty stubborn person like me, and I said, I'd be willing to put my life on it. I'm that sure about the analysis, assuming that the data that I got from the state and everything else was accurate. So, you know, if you're giving me all inaccurate data from everywhere, then, you know, that's my only caveat.
And could you tell us your professional background, please?
I'm a portfolio manager. I have my, I had my CFA since I was 23. I got my MBA from Kellogg in organizational design and strategy. I'm working on a financial engineering degree at the moment. I like math for fun. I believe math is the language of the universe.
Well, thank you very much. Very helpful.
Mr. Pitten, would you be willing to furnish that file? I mean, I get the math.
Oh, absolutely.
You've given me a headache, though, but would you be, would you be willing to furnish that to this committee and jump drive or whatever? I just want to make sure that it's not protected by copyright or anything like that. And if, at the same time, I believe, Mr. Giuliani would probably like to have that...
This is the drive right here, you can have it. With this data here.
We'd rather copy it, but thank you very much.
Oh, yeah, that's fine, you can have the drive.
Very good. Thank you very much, sir.
Okay.
We would too, sir.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Marissa Hamilton and Elizabeth Harris. Are you in here yet? If you would, please come to the table, have a seat, give your name, and just very brief 10 seconds, what you intend to show. And just very brief 10 seconds, what do you, what you intend to show? And if you would, uh, the hour grows late. We're at 3 o'clock already. So if you can keep it to no more than 10 minutes, we'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. Seven minutes. Hello, my name is, my name is Liz Harris. And what I intend to show is I actually am the one who brought Bobby Pyton into this. And I only brought him into this on Friday. So if you can imagine what he can do with, um, with, you know, a week's worth of time, it would be amazing. And I really hope that someone looks at hiring him or he might volunteer his services, I don't know, at looking at all the challenged states and all the states in the United States of America to see what states were affected. Okay, thank you very much. Again, my name is Liz Harris. I reside in Chandler, Arizona, which is in Maricopa County. I am the owner of a small business, a real estate brokerage. In December 2019, I was asked to consider a run for AZ State House of Representatives. At that time, I knew politics was divisive and I gladly took on the challenge and ran an extremely clean campaign. I lost by a very small margin. When I went to vote on Friday, October 30th, 2020, everything seemed to be safe and secure and I was told that my vote would be picked up the following day at noon. I even did a Facebook Live to ensure the residents of Arizona that we have a safe and secure voting system. However, with what I personally witnessed, the testimony we were hearing today and the research I have buried myself in since the election day, I heavily doubt that Arizona has a secure system. When I question the events, I am frequently told there is nothing we can do about it except fix the legislation over the next two years to remedy these issues. I believe that is what we were told in 2018. On election day, I visited eight voting centers. Each voting center had approximately two people in blue shirts marked poll observers. They were all uniformed and all Democrat. Interestingly, when I and others spoke to them, the majority was from California. Some were even admitted attorneys. Gee, California, wasn't that the same state that injected much of the $1.8 million in attack ads against my running mates and me, which is unprecedented for a state election? The observers remained in close proximity to the 75-foot line and were sure to tell volunteer Republicans when they felt they were violating the 75-foot rule. At one location, a poll observer quickly left his station to bring out the election inspector who accused me of yelling at voters. When I told him, I believed he was mistaken, he went to harass two young Republican college students who were handing out voter guides outside the 75-foot markings. The election inspector then continued to tell these young gentlemen that they were harassing voters. I came to their defense as a witness that they were doing no such thing. This confrontation lasted well over five minutes. It honestly felt like the entire event was orchestrated just to intimidate. At another polling station, undisclosed location, someone deliberately removed over a dozen of my signs and my two running mate's signs and left them down so they were not in the voters' line of sight. No big deal. Nearly 60 other signs were perfectly positioned. My running mate and I reinstalled the signs. I then learned that this polling center was also the receiving station on election night. This meant that many voting centers within my legislative district sent a day and a half worth of ballots to a polling stasis that was clearly biased against us. It was an odd location to centralize ballots. Access was not easy and the lighting was extremely poor. Knowing the bias against us, the faith that I had in the Arizona system began to diminish. While I was visiting the polls, I can testify to three polling locations that basically broke down in the middle of people voting. And what happened was those lines of people were sent home, not sent home, but sent to other locations to go vote elsewhere. That was all questionable. All sorts of stories, they ran out of ink, they ran out of, I mean, nothing made sense. Learning that we did indeed use Dominion software in Arizona and that Eric Coomer sold it in October of 2019 and was involved in the training process, I further lost confidence in the integrity of our election. Eric Coomer clearly identifies as an anti-Trump Antifa apologist as seen on his social media pages dating back to 2015. All of these pages have since been removed. Considering that on my campaign trail, I was heavily, heavily, heavily attacked by Antifa, including a really bad death threat, which I had a nightmare about last night. Once again, I have little confidence in the state's discernment of who they select to do business with. Several days after the election, I asked the AZ GOP for a sample of voters over the age of 90. Using a nationally known background checker, I found a third deceased, a third where I could not find a record of the person existing or a social security number tied to the person, and then a third who were alive and well. This led me to ask for a larger sample size. I got a really large sample size of 30,600. Fellow concerned citizens performed these checks with me and found not only deceased voters at a rate of 0.1%. Now realize that number's going to go down and I don't think deceased voters is our issue in Arizona. But we did a, we did three audits and actually on some, we did a quadruple audit. And what we did is we made sure before we classified a person as dead, we looked for the obituary. I mean, we did everything except visit the tombstone. This was thorough. But more importantly than the dead voters was the voter whose identity we could not verify or find a record of. And that consistently ran at 10%. Now, if you take that 10% and you look at 3.3 million voters, that is right in line with what Bobby Pyton just presented to you. Multiple cases of voters who voted twice. Again, that number is not that large. 22,903 ballots that have receipt dates prior to the ballots being sent out. Now, I just want to say, very often we hear, oh, those are the military ballots. But then we have an additional 4,854 ballots that were received 10/7 and 10/8. Now, we all know the ballots mailed on 10/7. My household received one on 10/8 and two on 10/9. And we have 2,000 votes which uses an address that is a vacant lot. When we examined that address, it turned out to be an area of Phoenix where homeless tents were erected. However, it was not 2,000 tents. Of course, the homeless have every right to vote, but the numbers are overwhelming. This leads me to question, was the state of Arizona in any way negligent when they assured the Arizona residents that we have a next-to-perfect mail-in ballot system because we have been at it for over two decades? I requested that a friend, Bobby, look at the data to help me decipher exactly where, if any, of the abnormalities were occurring. And he had much to report. That 30,000 was a lot to go through. You can imagine what it would be to go through 3.3 million. With Bobby's report, he has now identified for me 450,000. And our auditing team is more than happy to start going through those 450,000 voter registrations and people who voted to decipher which of these people, which of these ballots is fraudulent. For us to certify this election at 11:00 AM this morning and allow our electors to pass the Arizona vote to Biden based on all the information presented here today is an absolute travesty without a solid investigation. Thank you very much.
Ms. Harris, I just, I've got one question for you and we're going to move on to the next witness. You have got a workforce that is committed to doing this. What is your estimation on how long it would take to work through a sample of, shall we say, 30% of your, your highest number?
It's got to get done before December 14th.
I'm very aware of that, but.
So, um, to verify that a voter doesn't exist, you actually have to go to the residence and basically, in my opinion, get a recording from the person who resides there stating that they are not alive or that that person has never lived there. You need, you need proof that there's a murder. You need a murder weapon and you need a witness to the murder. So we can do this in seven days.
That's the answer I was looking for. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you. God bless America.
Would you please see to it that Mr. Giuliani has your information? Thank you. Um, ladies and gentlemen, next up we have Jan Bryant. All right. Jan, would you please come to the table and have a seat? Give your name and we'll move forward. And just so we can keep this going, we also have Greg. Hmm, I'm going to kill your name, man. Wadniski on deck. Thank you, Jan. If you don't mind, could you give your name and briefly why you're here? And you've got about five minutes to explain. Okay?
So my, my full name is Janice Bryant, but I go by Jan. It's easier.
Thank you.
I am retired, Maricopa resident for six years since I retired. Before I retired, I was a senior manager at a fairly major utility running a lot of big multimillion-dollar technology projects. So I have some experience. I have an MBA. So not just an old retired lady, I just wanted to give you a little bit of background. And I was, this is my first election I ever volunteered for. So I'm a huge volunteer for a lot of things, but this is the first time here in any election. And some things happened. I worked at a couple of polling centers, but mostly I was at the Maricopa County Ballot Tabulation Center. And that's the stories that I want to share today that I found some issues with. And I'll tell you the biggest thing. I have no idea how this happened, but on November 10th, we were on a night shift. It was about 9:30. And I actually was watching the people doing the duplication ballots. And so they were hand-entering military and overseas ballots. Those, that happened behind a wall. So if there are any camera people shooting through the glass window, you could not see those people who were hand-entering ballots. So all of that work went on behind a wall. So you walk around behind the wall. We were allowed to go back there and watch, and I did. But it just would be random if you happened to go by and something weird happened. This first incident that I had, um, they had a duplicate ballot. And these are printed off at a company called Runbeck, I believe. And then they bring them over and they're hand-entered. And they call it the duplication process. Anyway, that, um, ballot numbers were identical. The system does not allow for a duplicate ballot entry, so it kicked it out. I didn't really think any, any issue of it. I thought it was weird. There was two copies of the identical ballot in this stack of ballots that one Republican and one Democrat employee were entering. But I didn't record that. But then later that evening, and I said, that was about 9:30, I did record this one. There was a ballot with a red vote for president, a red pen. And these are copies. There should be no red ink on any of these ballots. And so the two ladies that were entering the ballots stopped and said, this is weird. We have everything, there's no red marks. It was the only mark for president. It happened to be for Biden. But it didn't matter. It was an anomaly. And so why did that, why was that red ink on that ballot? I don't know. I never did find out. So that was weird. They called Scott Jarrett over and he actually said, this needs, apparently there's a committee that reviews any ballots that can't be determined in the room at the time. So Scott said, put it aside. Well, and he walked away and I stood there for another minute. And luckily, because the next two ballots were duplicate copies, but not red ink, just black, same mark, same vote, um, and the same ballot number. And, um, so we called, I know, I don't know why. So we called Scott back and he took all those ballots and put them in a manila folder so I couldn't get a ballot number or any other information and set it aside and said, this will go to the committee tomorrow. And I did bring that up with the person that I was reporting to and said, we need to find out what happened to these ballots because this is something really unusual. So that was, that was a very specific incident. I want to say there were a lot of small incidents, but nothing that I could say. This really made me very nervous to see that happen. I will, and then back to my opening where I wanted to tell you that I do have a pretty strong project management technology background. This is not, I would say, everybody raves about how well-run and how tight this room is that we were working in. I was in the tabulation center. You know, the glass and the servers in a glass room and all the computers are on a single cable that you can see. None of that is, matters because two things. One, Dominion employees were the only ones that were running any of that equipment. So, um, no, and I was in the tabulation center seven, six different days, day and night shifts. And no county employees, no IT people, no one else was touching any of the software. They did all the training for the adjudicators. They ran all the reports. And so, um, and I brought that up on my very first day in the room. I said, this doesn't seem right. As a person with my background, never in a million years would I turn my company's most important thing over to someone else. And there's only two guys and, um, and they, they had the whole control of everything. I also participated in the random ballot selection for hand audit, picking the ballots, you know, determining which bin we were going to select. And even that Dominion ran the, ran the reports for. So no one, I mean, there was, they knew exactly what was in the hand audit boxes. That made me nervous also. And they also knew when we pulled the last box, which was probably eight days before they quit counting ballots. So I don't know, I can't, that's all I can tell you is what I observed. I can't tell you that there was anything wrong. I just can tell you what I observed. And as a senior manager over big projects, never in a million years would I have allowed some of the stuff that I saw going on there. The other thing that I wanted to make sure, the final week that they were counting ballots, I came in, I think on a Tuesday. When I had left the Friday before, I did not notice there was a laptop in the room behind the wall that John, one of the Dominion employees, was working on. And when I came in on that Tuesday and walked around where they were doing the, the hand entry of ballots, I also noticed that laptop sitting there and John was working on it. And, um, it's not a secure room. If you're bringing a laptop in and out of a room, who knows what happened there? And every one of the 50 potentially desktops that were in there had a row of USB ports on the side of it. So I get very angry when I hear some of our leaders here saying, oh, it's secure. Nothing can get in or out. It's not true. So I will tell you that that is probably the biggest issue that I had. I will also say there were three rows of adjudicators. So, and you may have heard this before or seen it. One Republican, one Democrat, sitting at a, they call them boards, but it's a monitor. And adjudicating any issued ballots that kick out that can't be tabulated automatically. And, um, those, um, rows, the first day, the first few days I was in there, we were allowed to walk between the rows so we could get fairly close. They were very close together. So with COVID and everything else, it was awkward anyway, but we could walk between them. And we were all wearing masks, by the way. But anyway, we, um, the, when I came back in on a, I can't tell you the day, but, um, they were placing stickers on the floor to keep us away. So we could only see the back row of monitors and get close enough to see anything that was happening. So, um, I would say that that, the reason they gave was that one of the observers had gotten too close and was actually like touching people. I do not know. I wasn't there. That's the reason I was told. But then we were not allowed the rest of the time anywhere near the rest of the monitors. So we could see the back, I don't know how many were on the back row. We could see all those pretty clearly, but other than that, I couldn't tell you what was happening on the adjudication. Um, let's see. There was one more thing that wasn't on my list. They reset the tabulation machines three times to zero.
I beg your pardon, I didn't.
They reset the tabulation machines three times to zero.
At what point?
Throughout, because they did not know, and this is literally what Dominion and Renee, who works for the county, told me. They didn't know what would happen after so many batches had gone through those new high-speed tabulation machines. So apparently they can take a card out and start over at zero. Now, as observers, we were recording the counts on each of those machines at the end of each shift. And then when it started over at zero, we recorded that. So it's recorded and it wasn't hidden. But I just want to say again, how poor of a project is this that you didn't test for how much data was going to come through? That they had no idea. So they were afraid that the machines would crash. I don't know what they thought. They didn't know what would happen. So they zeroed them out again to start over, start counting over, so. And I just want to say, I am retired. I don't, I'm here because, and I don't want to cry, but I love my country and I never thought in a million years I would have to be here talking about stuff like this, so.
Mr. Giuliani, do you have a question? Or two?
Mr. Chairman, this is part of the damage that's been done by this horrendous fraud on the American people, not just here in Arizona, but throughout the country. People like this who are patriotic, decent Americans are trying to do an honest job and they're in the middle of a gigantic swindle by a political party that lost its soul probably 20 years ago. So may I just ask you a few questions so that we get the, your testimony was excellent, but. I just want to get it organized a little bit better. How many days did you, um, how many days were you an observer?
How many days?
How many days altogether?
Uh, I was in the tabulation center six days altogether. I was in the tabulation center six days altogether, two night shifts and four...
So you were solely the tabulation center, not the polling place?
I was at a polling place for half-shifts a couple times before that, but I didn't bring up any information.
But your testimony is about the calculation center?
Yes, the tabulation center.
And you say here, on November 3rd, 2020, you observed at the Maricopa County BTC for the first time that it seemed strange that the tabulation and adjudication hardware and software were only run by Dominion employees. That meant that none of the county employees had access to them?
To the software. The people who were actually doing the adjudication and running the tabulation machines, those were Tampa employees or employees of the county.
But the software and the hardware was handled solely by Dominion?
There were three total employees, two mostly.
Were you led to understand that there should be no Internet communication with that room to the outside world?
Yes. They even pointed out that the servers are only plugged into the electrical outlet. There's no Internet. But if you bring a laptop in, all bets are off.
Of course, during the course of this hearing, we've seen, I would imagine, millions of communications out of that center and back into that center. So whoever told you that was just lying completely.
And they said it a lot. I mean, that's like their...
But to support that, you did see a computer. How many did you see? How many computers did you see?
Total computers in the room? Probably 50 to 60.
And they wanted you to believe that they weren't communicating with anything?
They were supposedly hardwired to the server and no other access, was what we were told. But the laptop, I don't know, because I did not... I didn't get close enough to see what was going on there.
When they were doing adjudications, adjudications would be the ballots that were put aside because there was something questionable about them, correct?
The adjudication, the tabulation machine kicks it out because a lot of times it's just a write-in candidate, which is totally legitimate, or stray marks on the ballot that made it... Or overvotes. So they voted for two candidates where there was only one. So all of those things kick out. And they told me that one in eight ballots kicks out for adjudication.
One in eight?
One in eight, yes.
One in eight ballots? And when they were examined, were you able to observe the examination?
The adjudicators, that's the part where I could see the back row. They did not have hard copies of the ballot. It was fully up on the screen. And all they were doing was determining why the tabulation system kicked out the ballot and then trying to make a decision based on what the voter intended. So they tried not to throw ballots out if they could understand.
Was there a Republican president to listen to that?
Each board had one Republican and one Democrat. That's what they told us, so...
Well, when you say, "That's what they told us," what does that mean?
I will tell you, on the last few days, they pulled in a whole bunch of employees to be the Republican. Or you could be an independent also, so...
When you say they pulled in a whole group of employees to be Republicans, you mean they were county or county employees who they said were Republican?
Or independent. I'm sorry. I misspoke.
Or independent.
You had to have two parties, and it could be two of the three. So either independent slash libertarian, or Republican, or Democrat. So two of the three had to be...
And why are you in doubt that they were actually Republicans?
Because I was in the room a lot, and everyone in there... Not everyone, but I will tell you that a high percentage of the employees in that room were Democrat. And I will tell you that I walked out with one of the adjudicators, a Tampa employee. She was very upset because she was a Republican adjudicator, and she said she heard a lot of people cheering every Biden vote and people who worked there. So she was upset when we were walking out. And I said, "You need to tell whoever you're working for. I don't know what to tell you to do at that point."
Did they have Republican identification of some kind?
They wear a lanyard, red, blue, or yellow.
But you doubted that they were Republicans?
I doubt those last few days that those were truly independents. I bet.
And what about verification of signatures? Did you get a chance to observe that?
I did not watch the signature, but there are some people behind me that did.
Pardon me?
There are people coming in the room next that did see the signature.
And when you say, "As a project manager, you were shocked," can you just elaborate just a little bit?
This is the most important thing going on in the country right now, and this whole thing is run more sloppy than any project I've seen. I just can't believe that this is how we run elections. I just can't. And that we sign off on this. I mean, has it always been like this? Like I said, this is my first time, and I'm very disillusioned. I just don't understand.
Did you detect a bias in it? A bias?
I didn't personally, but they knew who I was, so...
Pardon me?
They knew I was the Republican official observer.
No, I mean a bias in the way in which they were doing it.
In the way... No, I can't say that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. I believe... Somebody raised their hand. Yes. Mr. Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ma'am, you spoke earlier about you said that the tabulation machines were set three times over a period, if that was one evening or over the period...
Over the whole time.
Over the whole period. You said that it was recorded. That's good. Do you have any inclination as to why that could or could be problematic?
The only thing is, when you start over it, I mean, they're keeping track of how many ballots are running through each machine, and so they're getting reset to zero. They all were reset at the same time, so it all happened on the same day, on the same shift. So what was problematic was, that shows me that they did not have a tested system in there, because they literally told me they didn't know what would happen if it went over 1,000 batches on any machine. So rather than have that happen and not know what was going to happen with the ballots or the tabulation or anything, they just started over.
And they specifically used that term? They didn't know what would happen if it went over 1,000 batches?
Batches, I think they call... That doesn't seem like the right name, but I'm losing the name right now. But a thousand-somethings going through there, so...
Thank you. Mr. Cook?
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Chairman, to that point. So how can I feel comfortable with, in what I've just heard you say and my colleague talk about? So if I get this right, they ran 1,000 batches, vote totals come up for one party or the other. Now, I don't want to get into that, but vote totals come up for one party or the other or candidates. What I heard you say is, so you document what those votes are, or they...
We documented the number of ballots that had gone through that machine each shift. And so we had a number that was incrementally going up every shift, and then...
Okay. So then they go to zero. So is that information is put over here for what that batch is?
I don't know what happened to the original...
So my... Yeah. So what I'm trying to get to is, how can I feel comfortable that, are there 10 batches? Are there nine batches? Were there 15 batches and only nine batches counted? And I go back to what I have seen is when they were doing an audit in another state, and the woman had her video recorder on, and everybody knew it, and said, "Well, how many batches are there? Well, we thought we were through, but we have six or eight more boxes of batches we can't find." And that's what I'm trying to get to here in Arizona. How do we know that that wasn't the case there? Can you give me some assurance? Because I would really like to add some...
I can't, and I don't know who could. But I will tell you what you just said triggered another thought. The Wednesday before the Friday that we quit voting, so 10 days before they quit tabulating, they thought they were done. And then more truckloads of ballots would come in, and I'm like, "How can you not know how many ballots are still out there?"
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Would you repeat that? They thought they were done?
They thought they were done multiple times.
And then there was... There was what?
Multiple times. The people that were running the rooms thought they were done or almost done, or were going to be done Wednesday morning, then Thursday morning, then Friday morning, and then it went on the whole next week. And I'm like, I asked the question, I'm like, "You don't know how many ballots are still left to come in?" So I don't know who does, again, process, project management. Zero.
On that point, ma'am, I'm tracking with you, but what day did the truck show up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, because what I heard the first time, what I thought I heard is a truckload of ballots showed up.
Okay. Just a minute. I want to make sure that we capture this properly. So there were trucks that showed up on the 3rd, and then the 4th, and then the 5th, and how long did that go on? How many days?
Well, I wasn't there the whole last week, but I know they were still...
For as long as you can recall. How many days?
My last day was the 10th, and they were still coming in. And they were coming from a company called Runbeck that does the high-speed scanning and printing of duplications and I think the military ballots. Now, I'm getting out of my comfort level here talking about this. I don't know what they're doing, but those ballots were coming in from a high-speed scanning company called Runbeck that... Apparently, you haven't heard of Runbeck?
No, I've heard of Runbeck, ma'am. What I'm trying to figure out is whether they printed them or they scanned them, and if they scanned them off-site, to what purpose?
I can't tell you that.
Because wasn't that your job to scan them? Well, I beg... Not your job, but...
Yeah. No. No, all the high-speed scanning happens at Runbeck. So those ballots go to Runbeck. As far as I know, there were no observers there. I don't know. I never got called to work at Runbeck. That's all I can tell you.
Okay. With all due respect, Mr. Cook, now we've opened up a whole new can of worms.
Yeah. And again, I don't know enough about it to be the witness.
No, that's fine. I just... Your observation is useful here. So what you're telling me... I'm going to play this back to you a second. The scanning wasn't actually done on-site at Maricopa County structure. It was done someplace else?
Where they have very high-speed scanners, yeah.
Well, right now, I really don't care what the speed is. I want to know, were they Dominion scanners?
No, no. I don't think there... I don't think it has anything to do with Dominion.
So I'm trying to understand, what was the purpose of scanning them in advance of them being tabulated on the Dominion equipment?
They were duplicate duplications, the ballots that wouldn't read through the tabulation machines. They were ballots that came in from military and overseas. But there were more ballots than that, so I don't know where the rest of them were coming from, because they kept bringing trays of them in. So I don't know where they were coming from. That's a question for the county employees to explain to you where those ballots came from that whole next week. I don't know where they came from.
Mr. Cook, are you done?
Left.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Cook. Mr. Giuliani.
So you were there from the 3rd until the 10th?
Yes.
Okay. So seven days later, ballots were still coming in. And were those ballots counted?
Yeah, I watched them go through...
Did you observe them being counted?
I watched them go through the tabulation machines, and I watched people working on the adjudication of those ballots.
And how many ballots?
Oh, I don't know.
What was the largest number you saw in any one day?
Oh, man.
That was just a guess. How many cartons?
Okay, there was... And it wasn't there, like, there was usually two or three shifts. So I want to say one day, they thought 90,000 was a good number for a shift.
So one day was...
For a shift. And if they were running multiple shifts.
And which day was that? One of the middle days, one of the end days?
It was in the middle, probably.
Somewhere in the middle between the 3rd and the 10th?
Yeah.
90,000?
Yeah.
And then other days, it was approximately the same, or...
Some were less, some were more. So some days when they had the three shifts... Well, they never had three shifts tabulating. Sorry. They just would run along.
Sure, no, that's okay. You're doing the best you can.
They would run a long tabulation shift.
What was the lowest number, you think?
There were some days when maybe there was only 15,000. Boy, please do not hold me to these numbers, because I...
Was that toward the end?
No, that would have been earlier.
To the beginning?
Yeah.
In other words, there were more ballots at the end than the beginning?
There were ballots... They were backing up, was what I would say.
And what about...
Not more coming into the building necessarily, but there's a room that we could see with rows and rows of bins of ballots.
These were coming in a different way?
Yes. I don't know.
They're coming in the back door?
Some come from the mailbox or from the postal service. They all go through. A couple of, you know, they get the signature verified, then they get the... Separated from the envelope, and then they end up somehow in the room that I was in.
So if I understand this correctly, ballots were coming in two different ways?
At least, yeah. From the post office.
Front door, back door?
Well, I think they were all the back door.
Oh, they were all the back door?
All the back door. None came in the front door.
But this group was 15,000 for a low, 90,000 for a high. And then those last couple of days when you were there, the 8th, the 9th, and the 10th, how many?
It was pretty average. They were still running full-time, long shifts.
Like 90,000?
Yeah, probably 80 to 70 to 80, maybe.
Anybody explain?
Explain.
Anybody explain what they were?
I did not ask every time. I asked a few times, so I know, I understand some of them, but...
Okay.
Senator Allen, you have a question?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Bryant, I'm curious, why did the county, on the last day she was the last day, brought in county employees to take part of being part of the observers? Why did they...
They weren't observing. They were actually adjudicating, so they were doing...
Oh, adjudicating, okay.
Yes. And I think they just needed all hands on deck. So I mean, that was the intent, was to get the work done, finish counting, because they kept thinking they were done, and they weren't.
Well, because I was... Heard that then, because I was thinking that you were saying they were to make up for the lack of not having Republican there. So were we short of having volunteers to go in and observe in Maricopa?
I don't believe so. There was always at least two of us in the tabulation center and at least one in one of the other rooms, the signature verification. What the employees were doing was the adjudication work, which also requires two different parties to adjudicate each ballot. So you had to have at least, you know, two of the three parties to do that. So that's what the county employees were doing at the end. They brought them on just to help the backlog.
Well, that's what I was thinking, Mr. Chairman, because I was thinking we should have called in more of the party workers then to come in and help rather than do that. But that's fine.[1540.12] that. But that's fine, you clarified it for me.
We didn't call anybody in. That's, I think, the joy of this hearing. Every single one of these individuals has stepped forward of their own volition. And I, to be honest with you, I am... I'm mortified to hear what's coming out of your mouth, but I am so delighted that you have had the courage to come in here. Very appreciate it. Representative Roberts, just keep in mind, we still have got a dozen witnesses to hear, and it's 3:30, so...
Sorry, and they're all really important.
I just wanted to revisit what you were saying as far as... You got to a point where you... They continued to say that they didn't know where these trucks of ballots were coming from?
They didn't... It's not that they didn't know, it's that they didn't know how many were still coming.
Okay. I assume at this point in time, these were not early ballots in any way, shape, or form. I'm just kind of curious, while we've been discussing this, did anything stand out to you as far as these new ballots, that they didn't know where they were coming from, as far as a physical appearance in any way?
No.
No?
No. Everything... It just looked like ballots just kept coming. They all looked the same, they all came in the same bins, so...
Senator Birelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ma'am, just one real quick question. I'm sorry I was out. I don't know if it was addressed yet. But during the adjudication process where they were on the duplication, you said you were there observing. Was there a Republican and a Democrat sitting there literally making the corrections?
Yes. So, one was running the mouse on the computer... One was running the computer mouse, and the other one was logging anything they changed by hand. So, and then at the end of their shift, I will tell you that this process, of all the things I saw, was probably the cleanest. But so, at the end of their shift, they had to... They got a report of everything they'd changed on the computer, and they had to go through their hand log, and they had to both agree that everything they did was what they said they were going to do.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Next, we have Greg Wadniski, and up on deck is Les Greg, I'm very sorry for butchering your name in, but if you would, could you properly pronounce it?
Yeah.
Give us just 10 seconds of what you plan to tell us, and if you could, keep it within 10 minutes.
Yeah. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Greg Wadniski. I'm obviously an American citizen and a resident of Maricopa County. I want to talk to you a little bit about what I observed as a certified poll observer, election observer, down at the Maricopa County MTEC facility, the Tabulation Center, as it's referred to. I'm going to refer to some of my notes, but in short, what I'd like to talk about is comments that were made to me by Dominion employee around chain of custody, and what I would discuss or describe as the ability of fluidity or porous administration on the system. As I mentioned, I was an observer at MTEC on 10/24, and then again, a week later, on Sunday, 11/1, before Election Day. I spent approximately eight or nine hours on-site at the MTEC facility. I obviously had the paperwork to be there, was badged, and I had the ability to move about the MTEC tabulation room. I was in the area where they were doing adjudication work, and then later on the Sunday, the 11th... Excuse me, Sunday, the 1st, they were also doing ballot feeding and tabulation. What I observed in there was the Dominion computer system in what's described as a caged glassed area. There were several Canon scanners in there, as well as what I'd call two rather large bulk ballot processing machines, which are essentially OCR, Optical Code Recognition, scanners. I interacted with several supervisors. I will not mention their names here today, most of which are just by first-name basis, and that was either inside or outside that room. What's most important is I had an opportunity to speak to a gentleman, whose name I will not mention here by all I know is his first name, but he identified himself as a Dominion employee on contract to Maricopa County for the election, and I observed him and another Dominion employee, who I would say was in the capacity, as they described to me, as systems administration roles, and they demonstrated competence and knowledge around systems, access to the system, as well as the administration of that system. They were there to help the workers, as well as the volunteer poll... Not the volunteer, but paid poll workers to do the adjudication process, as well as any issues that may have occurred with the tabulation machines. What I observed was that the machines were optically reading the mail-in ballots, converting the paper ballots into an electronic image, and discerning the voter tabulation data into an electronic format. So, think of that as an image, like a JPEG, a picture, as well as some sort of tally or calculation. I don't have intimate knowledge of the inside workings of the system. And then, I also spent a day on November 5th in the signature room, but I will not discuss any of that today, but for the record. So, on Sunday, November 1st, in the adjudication, tabulation, scanning room, and a witness with other observer, who is here to testify today as well, as my witness, I spoke to this gentleman from Dominion and asked questions on the computer systems contained in the room and contained within that caged area, connected to the ballot scanners, the OCR readers. It was my understanding from staff, as well as the employees, that we were processing mail-in ballots, obviously, and that those tabulations were being fed into the computer system within that room, and there was an assuredly that there seemed to be a level of physical, as well as network security, based on the arrangement of those computer On that day, I asked the gentleman how the tabulation data and scanned images were being stored and backed up. It's common practice in computer system IT administration to do regular disk backups, or system backups, in the event that some sort of failure occurs to that system. The gentleman stated that he would perform a manual daily backup of the system to an external hard drive attached to and within the secured computer bay glass cage, as I described. The hard drive was in a rubberized orange case and easily visible. He pointed it... to it and identified it. I asked what software program he was using to perform the backups. He stated he was not using an automated backup, but inferred that he was doing a simple manual copy of data to this orange disk, as I'm referring to it here in my statement. Then, he said he took and made a second copy of that backup, of that orange backup, and then he reached over to his cubicle area and demonstrated a new box of hard drives that were contained in there, and he was saying that he was making a second copy of that data onto one of those fresh hard drives. That then led me to ask him a common question, which was, is there a chain of custody, and where does that drive go? He was a little bit vague in his answer, but he said that there was not a chain of custody, and that the copy that he was making daily of the master backup was being taken off-site to another facility, and he was unclear to me how it was. But when I asked him if it was getting serialized, or in any way secured, he could not confirm that, and basically said there was no chain of custody. I found that alarming. So, later that day, on that Sunday, I then, again, the same gentleman, observed him having a discussion with some of the staff and others, and I was able to walk about the room somewhat, and I came upon their conversation. And I overheard what he was talking about was... It sounded like he was trying to resolve a problem within the system that perhaps was slowing down the way the system was performing, considering that about 12% of the ballots that were being read at that point were going to what's called adjudication. So, we're talking about tens of thousands of ballots a day. And they were very concerned about getting those ballots processed in a timely fashion, as you could imagine. So, what he described to me was that he was having to take some of the scanned data and from what was an ever-growing large data file, so to speak, on the Dominion system with its storage, and break that larger file into small files, so that he could then point those smaller files to the adjudication stations for more efficient processing. That sounded like a manual and complex task to be taking something that's ever-growing, and I asked him, I said, "That's... You know, I said, "That's... Sounds like a bit of work." At any rate, what I discerned from that conversation was that by doing so, he was able to get some of that processing moving a little bit quicker, and it sounded like they were obviously trying to deal with the situation at hand. But what concerned me about that, and again, I'm only observing, was that it showed to me the fluidity and the porous nature of the access that the administrator had to tabulate ballot data, and that there was the possibility of that human intervention in the process creating a potential or non-intentional error, or the potential for lost data, or lost files. And that's what I observed on that day. When I left the facility later that day, I obviously reported some of my concerns, and then, of course, I'm here today to let you know what I saw.
Thank you very much, sir. Ms. Giuliani, do you have a question, or two?
Sir, so what... Can you help us a bit in what does that all lead you to, at least hypothetically conclude?
Well, I think my biggest concern would be that we've been hearing from election officials and others that...
Could you hear just a little closer?
Yeah. We've been hearing from election officials and others about the sanctity and the security of this system. We've been hearing things about networks and data coming and going, and one of the most, I guess, basic premises of any kind of security would be physical security. And by having that disk drive copied and then shuffled off the premises presumably, by this gentleman's statement, without a chain of custody, that's no different than ballots in a box, read or unread, coming and going without any supervision.
So, this Dominion employee took these with him, could have taken them anywhere, and could have done anything with them that he wanted?
There's the potential for that, or have given it to another individual to courier it to whatever facility they were allegedly storing it at. So, he was vague on those details. Perhaps he didn't know, but his job was to make that copy.
So, why is there a chain of custody?
I would imagine there's a chain of custody so that we can prove that the data has not changed, and it arrived at its intended destination unhandled and, you know, manhandled, or any kind of malicious activity performed on it.
And this was a Dominion employee who did this?
That's correct.
And did any of the county officials try to stop him, try to interfere with him?
Not to my knowledge. I mean, he openly talked about what he had to do, and I asked him the question on the backups. So, I would presume that he was performing a function that he deemed necessary to make sure that there was some data backup copies made, but I can't attest to why the county or the other employees there, or how they would have managed that process, other than the fact that he indicated that it left the facility.
Did he indicate he took... He was taking them with him, either home or somewhere else, to do something with them? Was there a purpose to it?
I did not hear him make any mention of that. My concern was, where did it go? And he inferred that it... He thought it might be going to another facility uptown?
He thought it might be?
Yes.
He didn't know where it was going to go?
Well, that's his words. I don't know if he actually knew. I can't read his thoughts. But my point is, is that his answers seemed a little bit vague, and perhaps honest, but nonetheless...
His name was Bruce?
Yes.
You don't know his second name?
I don't.
How old is he?
I would say he was probably in his mid-40s at the oldest, about 200 pounds, 5'8", 5'9".
And when you asked him what he was doing, he said he was bringing them uptown?
He said that the copy of the backup drive was being taken off-site, which is not an uncommon practice to have an onsite and an off-site backup copy. But when I asked him how it was getting there, how it was being transported, if it was being secured, and where it was landing, with some assuredly that it got there, he said there was no chain of custody.
But he said nothing else about where he was taking it, what was going to be done with it, or anything like that?
No. Again, implying the normal nature of what an administrator would do for backup, he probably was intending for it to be secured safely in the event that it was needed for some sort of restoration process.
How often did this occur? One time?
He told me that he was doing this daily.
So, every night, he would take out the drive with him?
He would make a copy to the main, what I called the... What he called the orange drive in the cage, in the security area, and then make a second copy for this off-site copy, which would then allegedly move out of the MTEC facility to some unknown destination.
And when you objected to it, what happened?
I guess I really didn't overreact. I was there as an observer, and I guess it wasn't my question... You know, I did feel it was my position to get confrontational about it, and I just quietly made my observations and duly noted them to the proper authorities.
Is there anything else yet noted about the facility?
I would say that, you know, I've seen some publications around the county's installation of the facility, and the idea that it provides a level of transparency to the community. It's visible if you have access to the building, the server's visible. My concerns, though, would be that I don't... I can't say with... You know, because I just don't know whether or not, by just looking at that facility and looking at the way the servers were secured, whether or not anyone else had particular access. I mean, there were many workers in that area, including the Dominion administrators. There was, you know, at any given time, 15, maybe even more than 20, people working on adjudication in there, as well as the staff from the county. So...
When they were taking the copy, making the copy, did they do any data checks before removing the drives, so they could compare it when it came back?
The... My question to the employee and his answer didn't include any speculation around that.
Did you see that happen?
No, I did not.
Thank you.
Members, any questions? Representative Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sir, you mentioned earlier that you said that you reported your concerns after this all took place. Who exactly did you report your concerns to?
The observer program, I was told to go online and make a report, and then later on, when I was reached by the coordinator for that, they asked me if I would make a declaration, which is why I'm here today.
Do you know if this information, as far as the lack of chain of custody, because I understand that from your explanation, this orange hard drive would be like essentially the entire electorate's votes that's kept in there. To your knowledge, was this ever the report of lack of chain of custody ever given to the Attorney General's Election Integrity Unit?
Not to my knowledge, and not through me.
Thank you.
Members, any other questions? Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Les Minkus, a poll observer, and Diane Serra is on deck. Good afternoon, Mr. Minkus. If you would, could you please give your full name and go right ahead into your testimony, please?
My name is Leslie Minkus, and as a veteran poll watcher and observer of the 2016, 2018, and 2020 elections, I'm here to testify to what I encountered in the 2020 election as voting irregularities, inequities, lack of transparency, and contested voter results. I'm also here as a veteran, a military veteran, and wish to extend my sincere appreciation to all of our military men and women that served to keep the United States of America a free constitutional republic, a nation of constitutional laws, checks and balances. And I salute our flag. And to all of our military branches, I say, "Semper Fi, always faithful." My professional bio includes 50-plus years in corporate life as vice president of finance, CFO, legally as an officer, for worldwide companies and joint venture operations, where I traveled to 28 countries over 13 years, responsible for financial operations, mergers and acquisitions, audits. There were both general audits and forensic audits, banking, tax, and legal relationships with barristers, solicitors, and attorneys internationally. Following is my declaration, as well as a copy of my poll observer authorization form, which I brought with me to show you that I was legally responsible as a poll worker, that I was required to present to poll inspectors at each of the poll locations where I was assigned to observe. Also, I have a picture of the Bar Elementary School Gymnasium. That was a polling location where I served on November 3rd. The picture is to demonstrate the enormous size of the facility for only one Republican poll observer to watch the voting activity from an assigned seat at the entrance of the gym, and not be able to see any of the ballots or the actual processing that was located at the opposite end of the gym. Everybody knows what a school gym looks like, but I thought I'd bring a picture just to make certain that you got it. I served as an official legal observer for the 2020 general election at two different locations. On October 27th, October 29th, I was at the United Methodist Church in Sunlakes, Arizona. On November 3rd, from 5:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m., at the Bar Elementary School in Phoenix, and then from 4:00 to 7:15 at the Sunlakes Methodist Church in Sunlakes, Arizona. While serving as an observer, I personally witnessed the following. Observers were not allowed to talk with poll workers or voters, which was part of the manual that the Secretary of State had put out, which was clear, nor was I able to freely walk around the poll location to observe any of the voting activities, which was contrary to what was in the Secretary of State's manual, indicating that we should be allowed to have access to all areas of the voting to be able to observe them. At the Sunlakes location, I was seated about 25 feet away from the tabulating machine and the ballot box, the ballot drop box, and I had to ask the poll inspector and had to be accompanied by a poll worker if I wanted to walk around to observe anything, anywhere in the polling locations. In the Bar Elementary School, I was seated about 80 feet from the two tabulator machines and the ballot drop box, and I had to ask the poll inspector... and I had to ask the poll inspector, who was at the opposite end of the gymnasium, and I only saw her maybe twice during the time I was there from 5:30 in the morning until 4 o'clock in the afternoon, um, if I was, if I wanted to walk around and I had to be accompanied by a poll worker to observe anything, anywhere in the poll location. It appeared to me that almost every ballot, from what I was able to see, that was processed through the tabulator computer resulted in a green light switch being activated, and either the poll worker or the voter had to depress, uh, that green light switch for their ballot to process through the tabulator. Okay, so... I also, um, was a, uh, on October 16th, I was also an observer, uh, that I went to the Maricopa County, uh, Election Center. Um, that was the week after the early voting had started. And I asked to observe the bowling, the ballot opening, I was asked to observe the ballot opening, sorting, and processing in the center. Uh, a point regarding lack of transparency, uh, at this facility includes observers were told how the ballot receiving process was supposed to function, but was not shown or allowed to see the mail-receiving room operations, the methods used to support, uh, the supporting of the various types of ballots, how the various types of ballots were opened and distributed to processors, what the processors did with the various types of ballots, uh, and the security of knowing that all valid ballots reached the tabulating room so that each legal vote was actually counted. While I was an observer there at the facility, where the ballots were received, validated, processed, um, in the large room that was there that I was seated in, I was about 25 feet away from the closest table where there was supposed to be, um, a Republican and Democrat sitting at the table, but who knew? And I mean, nobody knew who was actually at the table because you couldn't see any credentials for anybody there. The room was large enough to hold 110 ballot processors, um, and the closest one that I was near was 25 feet away. So I wasn't able to really see much of anything. Um, I was not allowed to talk to or ask any questions of anyone other than the Assistant Director of the facility, which I saw maybe two or three times throughout the, uh, the entire day that I was there from 9:00 in the morning till 5:00 in the afternoon. There was a young Asian man in the facility talking with the Assistant Manager at the same time that I was out in the corridor, um, that I briefly met and asked him what his role was, and he replied that he was a computer programmer at the facility. Well, I didn't think much about it until afterwards, when I heard the news and I heard about the allegations that China was heavily involved with, uh, the, um, ballot, the ballot tabulating company and the software. I started to think about, gee, that's really unusual that, um, we had an Asian gentleman that was there, uh, that was in the programming process. So I just thought it was kind of unusual, and I mentioned it in my affidavit that I had put in. Okay, finally, following the election, I was asked to come to the Arizona GOP office in order to be able to investigate some of the complaints that were coming in from voters. And I spoke with around 35 Republican voters that complained about their ballot issues of processing through the tabulating machine that they personally experienced on Election Day. Then they signed declarations under penalty of perjury that I actually went out, saw them, and talked to them, and asked them if they would be willing to sign those affidavits, uh, that they had to push the green button on the tabulation machine since the poll worker told them to do so, but didn't tell them that the machine rejected their ballot and what options they had to correct their ballots by having the ballot spoiled and redoing it again. So they just thought that pushing the green button was required to process their ballot through the tabulation machine, a sign of voting irregularity and voter inequity. Thank you. That concludes my testimony today.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Minkus, um... When you were at the, um, when you were at the center, you noticed this green button. Can you explain to us what the green button is, and was it on every machine?
Uh, it wasn't at the center that I observed the green button? It was while I was a poll observer?
When you were a poll watcher at the, as a voting, at the voting location?
At the poll location.
Okay, well, explain to me the, the green button.
The green button is a button that's labeled CAST.
CAST, C-A-S-T?
C-A-S-T. It is a triangular shaped button, and there is a, uh, another button that's on the machine right next to it, which I believe is a rectangular shaped button, that, um, was a button that was used for, uh, other issues, uh, but it wasn't for casting the ballot. If they wanted to reject the, the ballot, they pushed the rectangular button, and they would reject the ballot. So, as I understand it, the reason that the green light would show up is because the machine wasn't accepting, uh, the ballot. There was some issue with the ballot. Now, whether there was a sponge, whether there was an improper mark someplace, whether it was an overvote, an undervote, or whatever it may have been, it had rejected, uh, the ballot. But I had observed from the distance that I was at that so many times that green button, that, that green triangular button had to be pushed, that it seemed to me like it was almost a requirement that they had to do that in order to be able to put a ballot through.
And in fact, what happened when you pressed the green button?
Well, the green button did accept the ballot. It pushed it through, but it put the ballot then into a drawer, which they noted as drawer number three, which separated that from the ballots that were accepted, which went into drawer number one and number two. So all those ballots that went in number three, I don't know what happened to them.
Were they put aside for further inspection?
I don't know. Because these ballots then were all taken, this was on Election Day, naturally, that, uh, this became, uh, uh, an issue. And all these ballots then, uh, were, at the end of the day, taken out of the machines. They were put into box or boxes.
Special boxes just for them, for, for number three?
I don't know if the drawer number three went into a special box. Because I wasn't able to observe that.
I see.
And get close enough to see that. Uh, but I know that the ballots then were all supposed to be taken to a, another location where it was a central location in, uh, the East Valley, uh, in Arizona, uh, where they were going to be picked up by a white panel truck. Uh, and again, I did not follow that because the inspector, uh, who was a Republican, uh, indicated that she was going along with it and she was gonna follow it. But I do understand, uh, that during the time that I served as a, a poll inspector in the early election period, that there were, uh, times during the day, usually it was like about 2 o'clock in the afternoon, where a truck would come, a van, van type truck, a panel truck, would come to the poll location. There were two representatives that would come in that had, um, name tags on them. They would then, uh, take the ballots, and, um, I happened to follow that out. They would take the ballots, put it into a, um, a, a box, a plastic box, and they would take them out to their truck. Well, I, in one case, I followed them out just to see what was going on, and I noticed that the truck that they had, it had a California plate on it. So I thought that was kind of unusual, and I questioned about that. But I understand that they were renting trucks, uh, locally, so there could have been that there were enough people moving from California that were using those trucks that were here, and they wound up, uh...
Are you referring now just to the ballots that were the subject of the green button that went into number three?
No, these were just the...
All the ballots?
These were all the ballots. They were ballots coming out of the ballot box and ballots that were coming from out of the machines.
And the green ballots were taken along with them?
Yes.
Okay. And now you also said that, oh, how many ballots approximately do you think were cast that way? That you observed?
Well, in each day when I was there prior to the actual Election Day, um, there were probably several hundreds to thousands of people that filed through that particular...
How many?
Several hundreds to thousand, a thousand people that filed through that particular polling location.
Right.
Yeah. On Election Day, there was probably over a thousand people that came through there.
So total of about?
Couple thousand, yeah.
Two, three thousand people?
Yes.
And when, when you were, when you were at the Maricopa County Election Facility, where the ballots were received, validated, and processed, uh, you were seated 25 feet in front of a room with 110 ballot processors. Could you see anything?
No. I mean, I could see the people, I could see the room...
But could you observe, could you observe signatures or?
Not at all.
Envelopes or?
They would not allow us to go beyond. I was sitting in a seat, and, uh, there was a path, pathway that was in front of me where they would actually bring the carts in that had the ballots in them in mail containers, and they would just go through that long, um, aisleway and set them off on the side. Other than that, I was not able to talk to anybody, I was not able to see anything, I was not able to examine anything. So as a poll observer, I was really hindered by just being there and not being able to talk to anybody or see anything.
And what were they physically doing with the ballot?
Well, they were sitting at the tables. Uh, again, there were 110 of them, so they were spread...
110 tables?
Yes.
And how many observers?
And I would say the room was probably as large as this room.
How many observers, Republican observers?
Well, I was the only...
You were the only Republican observer?
On the Republican side.
For 110?
110 processors.
110 tables?
Uh, no, 110 processors. Two at a table, so there were probably about 55 tables.
55 tables, 110 processes.
And I was the only Republican observer.
And, and you have only two eyes, right? You weren't selected because you have more than two eyes.
Unless I'm wearing my glasses.
Well, then you have four, okay. So, I mean, you couldn't see anything?
Uh, uh, no, could not see anything.
They could have been, they could have been putting phony ballots in, and you wouldn't have known the difference?
Absolutely, it could have been.
Right? They could have been stuffing the ballot box?
Yes.
You're, you're supposed to be there in order to make us comfortable?
Yes.
That that didn't happen?
Yes, sir.
Because mail-in balloting is prone to that kind of fraud.
That's exactly right.
So they completely frustrated you in your mission to do that? How, how many ballots? Now you have a 55 tables, got 110 employees, we got a one, one Republican, Mr. Minkus, you must have felt a little, uh, uh, a little uncomfortable as the one Republican. Did you have your MAGA hat on?
Yes, and as, as I had asked the Assistant Manager there a couple of questions, uh, as she came in and out two or three times, uh, throughout the entire day, uh, I had asked her how many ballots they were actually processing. She said that they had about...
She thought enough to catch up?
2.8 million ballots that they were expecting to process, um, during that election period. I think there was a 14-day period. And there would be about a hundred, uh, a, a little over 100,000 ballots a day that were going through there.
So that, so those, those people were calculating, tabulating, checking out about 100,000?
They were moving very quickly.
Approximately 100,000 ballots?
They were moving very quickly.
Without any observation by Mr. Minkus, who was the only Republican there?
Exactly.
And did you, uh, raise an issue about that?
Uh, no, I didn't, uh, because I didn't know whether anything that was going on there was proper or not proper. I was only there for one day, and I was just observing to see what questions I did want to ask, of which I asked a few questions, as well as that I realized that I was not able to actually see the process coming where the trucks come in, unload the ballots, see what was going on in the mailroom, how they, uh, how they, uh, how they processed through, uh, the ballots.
It was just one day of that, one day?
Just, I was there for one day.
And about 100,000 votes a day?
Yes, correct.
And then you mentioned that 35 people signed under penalty of perjury. Something about the green?
Yes.
The use of the green button? Would you explain that one more time so I get it right?
Yes. Um, after the election was over with, uh, the Arizona GOP had received many, many calls and complaints from voters about the fact that they felt that, uh, their, um, when they checked, their ballot hadn't been counted. So they were wondering what happened to it. So they wanted to know how they can check to see if their ballots were actually counted or what happened to them. As a result of that, um, the Arizona GOP had asked for volunteers to come in to make calls back to these people, these voters, uh, to find, all over the valley, to find out, uh, what the issues were that they had encountered. What I had uncovered that I just testified to was that many of these people that I talked to, there were at least 35 of them, for which I actually went out and picked up their affidavits. So I was able to talk to them not only on the phone, but, uh, talk to them, uh, person to person, um, that they had told me that the experience they had was that the, um, they brought their ballot up to the machine, the, um, they put it into the machine. The poll worker that was there, um, when the green light went on, the poll worker that was there told them to push the green button. And they did, and the machine accepted their ballot, but yet it wasn't counted.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Minkus?
Is that you, Mr. Roberts, or Mr. Cook? Mr. Cook, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is to clear something up for us here from your testimony, sir. Okay, I don't know if anybody else noticed, but there were three drawers. And, and I'm confused, what do we need three drawers for? If, um, so my question is, the two drawers that were there, how were those ballots separated and why? Were votes for the presidential candidates, were they separated by that for two drawers? Was, uh, they separated for the county supervisor races? Why was there a need for two drawers if the ballot went through the machine? Everything was good, why true drawers? Do you know the answer to that?
No, I don't. But if you go onto, uh, the Secretary of State's, um, website and take off the 2020 general election manual, it tells you in there how those machines were set up, and it explains to you what those three drawers were.
Okay, thank you. Next thing, question I have was that, did you witness in any of your, uh, and thank you for your work, by the way. Did you witness anything like the testimony we have heard today where the lowering of standards on the site for signature verifications for any mail-in ballots? Were those standards lowered at that site by any individual?
I did not observe that, um, so my answer to that would be, I don't know.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Minkus, uh, well, just to tack on to what Representative Cook was just asking, you stated earlier that you were not allowed to see the receiving process of those ballots. Does that include the signature verification? Is that what you were referring to earlier?
I wasn't allowed to, uh, see any part of the receiving process where the trucks would come to the building, they would be unloaded, they would go into the, um, mail-receiving room. The mail-receiving room should have been able to separate the ballots by whatever method they would use to separate them. They were then supposed to go through a slicing machine. And these were things that I was told, but we were not actually able to see them.
No, when you, if I may continue, um, when you say that you were told, because you also said something earlier that, uh, you were not allowed, you, you participated in 2016, 2018?
Correct.
And now 2020?
Yes.
And that, uh, some things changed from 16 and 18. I assume there's always gonna be some minor changes here and there. Um, but you said that you're not allowed to talk to them, and you're not allowed to walk around the polling place, which was contrary to the policy set forth by the Secretary of State.
Exactly.
So, were you given any reason as to why you were being told on the day of implementation of these policies why you were not allowed to do what was set forth in those policies? As far as seeing the receiving process, as far as, you know, you're there, obviously, to, to observe?
Yes.
Were you given any, you said that you were prevented. How were you prevented? What did they say to you? And did they give you a reason as to why you couldn't do that?
The inspector at each of the polling locations. After I would come in and I would show them my official credentials, um, they would then give me instructions, and this went on in both locations that I served at, where the inspector would tell us that, here's a seat where you can sit, um, and you can't walk around and talk to any of the poll workers or any of the voters. Uh, and if you do want to, um, go anyplace in the facility, uh, in the polling location, that you have to ask me first. in the polling location, that you have to ask me first, and I will assign a poll worker to you for you to be able to walk around with. Now, that's contrary to the observer's information that was on the 2020 General Election Manual that was put out by the Secretary of State, which said, if an observer arrives at the voting location, the inspector should, number one, welcome the observer and thank them for their service. Number two, instruct them that they can observe operations, but must maintain at least a six-foot of physical distance from voters. Number three, work with the observer to find a few optimal locations in the vote center that allow for observation without impeding the flow of operations. That's it. But I was told by the inspectors at each location that I must ask them for permission, and they must have a poll worker walk around with me.
Were you not considered a poll worker?
No, no.
You're a poll observer.
A poll observer, watcher, observer is separate from poll worker.
Okay, one last question, Mr. Chairman. So from 2016 to 2018 to 2020, again, you stated there was changes. Was there anything else that stood out in 2020 as far as the changes from your experience from the prior two election cycles, as far as new rules and things?
An unfriendly environment.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Minkus?
Yes, sir.
Forgive me, but I'd like to expand on that a little bit. Unfriendly compared to previous years?
Yes.
And unfriendly how so?
As a Republican poll worker, which I had a badge that I had to wear that said that I was a Republican poll observer, I felt intimidated by, if I was walking anywhere in the facility, even to go to the bathroom, some of the poll workers would, they'd kind of be intimidating. They'd be, if I made a nice gesture or comment to them, I wouldn't get any kind of return back to that extent. You know, if you're having a good day, something of that nature. It was a rather intimidating, unfriendly environment.
So a failure to be cordial?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Senator Burley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Minkus. Now, were you a volunteer?
Yes, sir.
Or were you getting paid for that?
No, I was strictly a volunteer.
You did that completely on patriotism and no pay? And, yeah, no, no good deed goes unpunished, right. Now, did the Democrat poll, the other folks, your counterparts, did they have a badge also?
I had a selfish motive for doing what I did. And it is to save this country.
Yes, sir. Now, your counterpart, did they also have a badge that identified Democrat?
Some of them did, some of them didn't. So it wasn't consistent.
But you were.
They all had to come in with an identification. The Republicans were one color, the Democrats were another color. When I was at the election facility there for the short period of time that a Democrat was there, which they came in like about 2:00 in the afternoon and they stayed from 2:00 to like 4:00 in the afternoon, there was a Democrat there. She was sitting right next to me. The extent of the conversation I had with her started and ended with the fact that the Democratic office in Phoenix was destroyed sometime during the year by one of their workers. And I didn't know anything about it, frankly, but, I mean, she went on and on talking about it like that was the only thing that we ever got a chance to talk about. So, yeah, it was, it was an environment that was not, I didn't really feel warm as a volunteer to actually feel like I was being accepted and being welcomed to be doing what I was doing.
One more question. Are you a veteran, sir?
Am I a military veteran?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, I am. I made that.
What era?
I was in during the Cuban Missile Crisis.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your service, sir. Beyond your military service?
I'm sorry?
Beyond your military service, sir?
Yes, sir.
It's people like you that make this country work, so thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
All right, our next witness, and I know, I'm very sorry that we have, it's been such a long day, and we've had a number of witnesses that have had to go to work and have had to leave. So if, I'm going to give you a couple of minutes. If I call your name and you're not here, we'll go on to the next person. But we're going to try and work through this entire name list. The next individual up is Diane Sarah. Is Diane still here?
She should be on Zoom.
All right, she'll be on her way. Oh, she's on Zoom. Well, let's see if we can find Diane Sarah on Zoom. I am not seeing Diane Sarah on Zoom. So if somebody wants to reach out to her, or maybe they know her, if she would like to try and get back on, that'd be great. Next up, Judith Burns. Judith there? Are you Judith? All right, great. Yeah, if not, you are now. All right. If you would, please give your name. And if, I'm just going to ask you to be, please be succinct about your experience as a poll worker. So please give your name, and let's go.
I'm Dr. Judith Burns. I'm a resident of Maricopa County. And I've been a public educator for 40 years at both the university and secondary levels of education. I was an observer at the Tabulation and Election Center on two occasions, and a poll watcher in my community on one day. Initially, I chose to do this as a civic duty to my state and to my country. And I believed in the process. Excuse me. I'm nervous, because this is so very, very important.
Ma'am, please don't be nervous. It's just us normal people that you're talking to.
We're on your side.
I know, I know. I know. I won't check your grammar.
Thank you.
I observed at the Election Center on two occasions, both in the signature verification room and in the ballot processing room. The first day I was in the signature verification room, I was a little bit, having never done this before, I was a little bit startled at the circumstances. I walked in, was set at a table, told to stay in that spot, and I was facing a room full of computers that all I could see was the back of them. There were no, there were some computers behind me, but no screeners there that day. There were maybe eight or nine people present that day. I couldn't see anything, and I was very disturbed by this, but wasn't really sure what to do. I did ask Celia, who I believe is one of the Vice Presidents of Operations, why they were like that, and I was told because they needed to be set up that way due to the wiring systems. So I was there again four days later, and the room was full of screeners. I was able to turn my chair around and look through a Plexiglas at one of the computer screens, which was maybe six feet from me. I could see it better when I was able to stand up, which I did. I kept looking at the screen, because it seemed very odd. And in the bottom right-hand corner was a yellow banner. And I got into a position where I could see the yellow banner, which said "Low Confidence." Then I started paying much closer attention to the signatures, thinking this didn't even make sense to me, because the signature on the ballot that was being compared to other signatures didn't even resemble in any way what they were comparing it to. They were completely illegible. They were just scribbles on the ballot. And there were five screeners screening low-confidence ballots for an entire afternoon that I was in there. And I asked Celia what the low-confidence said, and she said, just not to worry about that, that this was a new program that they were testing. And I said, okay. So I continued watching, and shortly after I talked with her, I had a few other questions, and at that time, she suggested that I just sit down at the table where we were in our little area that we were supposed to remain. Shortly after that, there was a server outage. And I believe on my affidavit, I said there was a power outage. But in actuality, the lights were still on. It was just the servers in that room that went out for maybe 10 to 15 minutes. So I'm sitting there thinking, where did all those signatures go that were in the queue for them to check? That was one of my questions. Then, when the computers came back up, the gentleman that I could see quite well all of the sudden had a green banner, and it said "High Confidence." And I just sat there very quietly watching, because then they had some conversations. There were five screeners, all in one small area. They had some conversation. And the question from one of them to this gentleman was, are you still doing what we were doing? Meaning "low confidence." And he said, no, I'm doing "high confidence" now. And he was, out of those five screeners, he was then the only one that was doing high-confidence signatures, because he was the one I could see. And at least, that's what I surmised. I don't know if it was coincidental that there was an outage, and I don't really know what all that means. But what was evident to me was the signatures that were going through there were not what they were trying to compare to. And so that was my concern that particular day. Let's see. The other experience was in the, oh, I did ask Celia what happened to those votes. Were they counted? And I may have already said this, I don't think I did, but she said, yes, they were counted. And I sort of, I gave her a puzzled look, because it just, it all seemed very odd to me, and I wasn't sure what to make of the fact that there were all these signatures that did not match. And then I was being told they were being counted. The other area that I was in was in the ballot processing room. We were in a room probably a little smaller than this. There had to have been 75 to 90 tables in there. There was, there were two processors on each side of different parties, I was told. Again, we were put, I was probably as far away as that black curtain, and the room was this big. We couldn't see anything or really observe anything. There did seem to be a process for getting new ballots for them to take out of the envelopes and separate the ballot and the envelope. But what I noticed that raised some questions for me was they had their purses at their table. They had their cellphones there. During their break time, if they did not get up and leave their table, they were able to rummage in their purses and in their backpacks. People had backpacks there as well. And this bothered me. I wasn't really sure if this was appropriate. The other thing I found interesting in the whole process was when the press came in the second day that I was there, the two women that had been in a quality assurance role, is what I was told, that sat at tables, and they, I think if they had overvotes or undervotes on a ballot or an issue with a ballot, they would take to those women. All of the sudden, they were sitting at a table like this, one on each side, and they were processing the ballots very close to me. They weren't very far, they had set up a table very close to where I was as an observer. And the press was able to take pictures of us so that they could see that there were observers close to them, and they would get behind me, and they were directed that I was an observer. So they were trying to get pictures, including me, and that was the impression that I was given by the conversation I was hearing. The other experience I had was in my community at the, in the early voting. I got there very early, wanted to make sure I knew where I was supposed to be seated and what I was going to be able to see. And I was placed, again, against the wall, out of the way, so that I couldn't see anything. And when I got up to walk, keeping distance from people, and there was quite a bit of an area, it was in a gymnasium, so it was a large voting area. I wanted to see the process of when a person would put their driver's license in and then get their ballot printed out at the other end, go to their voting booth, and then turn in. I just wanted to walk the process to see what was going on. I was told to go sit down and to stay up against the wall, actually, quite a ways removed. Well, as it happened, where I was sitting was where people would come to turn in their ballots and put them in the slot. Well, many people did not want to take their masks off and lick their envelopes. And so they couldn't, they were trying water in a sponge and a rag. Well, the wetter the envelopes got, they would not stick. So they started putting masking tape on the envelope. And I guess it's the teacher in me, forgive me, but I did say to the supervisor, I'm not sure this is appropriate. I'm not sure these ballots will be counted, and I'm concerned. And I did call the number on the back of my badge that I was given, EDO, is that, I think that's it, the number that, and reported that this was going on. This went on all day long in this precinct. There was masking tape, there was tape. Somebody had gone to get a dober to try to get the envelopes to stick. But when I would watch people put them in, the envelope would open, and so I don't know if those ballots fell out, if those ballots were ever counted. I'm not really sure what it meant. But what I ascertained from all of this was that there were just some odd things going on, and I was concerned. I was concerned both at the Tabulation Center by the fact that we weren't allowed to see signatures, that I was looking at low-confidence signatures and was told that those votes would be counted, and then going to a precinct and seeing that envelopes were being taped with masking tape for an entire day. And I was very concerned about that. When I volunteered to serve as an observer, I did so with the belief in the process and the system. That belief has been shaken by this experience. It truly has. And I'm truly concerned for our future as a nation and as a state. And I truly hope that based on the facts and the information and the findings that you received today from the many, many people that are willing to come forward and state what they have observed, that you will make an honest decision so that the integrity of our state can be upheld. Thank you.
Dr. Burns, thank you very much for your courage and your service. Mr. Giuliani, do you have any questions?
So how many days were you there, Ms. Burns?
I was two days at the Tabulations and Election Center and one day at a poll watching.
Which was first?
The Tabulations and Elections, two days there.
The two days at the Tabulation Center?
Yes.
And then after that, at the election?
At the poll, the first day of early voting.
So at the Tabulation Center, most of the time, it was hard for you to see anything?
I wasn't sure what my purpose was.
And you were there to make observations of the examination of the mail-in ballots, weren't you?
Correct.
To see if they were appropriate?
Right.
Filled out, whether the signature looked right, address there, name there. Did you ever get to see any one of them?
Not one.
Not one?
Not one.
So how many people in this center?
In the ballot processing room, there were approximately 90 tables. And it was a gymnasium-sized room. And the first day I was there, there might have been maybe 50 to 60 people in the room, 50 to 60 tables with two people at each table. 50 to 60 tables with two people at each table. The next day I went was during the week, and it was also the day when the press was coming, so all the tables were quite full.
So how many Republican observers were there in addition to you?
We were allowed one Republican and one other party in the room. That's it.
For the entire room?
For the entire room. And I made the mistake after lunch of going into the room, not knowing that somebody else had been assigned to that room, and I was told to leave.
And you were expected to cover 90 tables?
Yes.
And you're, you were the only thing that stood between their cheating and our having some assurance that they weren't cheating?
Absolutely.
They could have been doing anything to those ballots they wanted to, correct?
Correct.
They could be accepting ballots that had no signatures.
Correct.
They could be selecting ballots that had 50 of the same signatures.
Right.
Correct?
Right.
They could have been accept, they could have been taking ballots they had written up before and put them in there.
Well, I found it interesting in the ballot processing room that, and I did forget to say this earlier, tubs of ballots came in, and they were all rubber-banded, but they were already opened. And they would, and so that when each table got their tub of, I think it was 250 ballots...
That's an interesting fact. They were all open?
They were all open. They had already been opened. And I did ask somebody, "Where do these ballots come from? Who opens them?" And she said, "They come from the mailroom." And I started to ask another question, and one question was about our limit that we were allowed to ask. When I started to ask another question, she walked away from me. So they were all open?
This was sort of, this was sort of, kind of like the approach of your governor and secretary of state. See no evil, right? Feel no evil. Just ignore it. So the ballots came in in a tub. Did the other ballots come in in a tub? Did ballots usually come in in a tub?
Well, I don't, they had been in the, they had been through this mailroom, wherever that was.
The normal ballots that were coming in, what did they come in, and what were they carried in?
They were like those tubs with the handles, the shallow tubs that were handled, and they were rubber-banded.
But they were, they were sealed, the normal ones?
No.
No, I say that the normal ones that came in were sealed.
We had no way of knowing. Nobody ever observed them coming into the mailrooms, or when they were opened, or by whom they were opened, or if anybody accessed those.
Well, when you saw that, when you saw the ballots being brought to the tables, could you see whether they were open or closed?
They were all opened. They were already, all of them were opened.
All the ballots were open that you saw?
They would, the people at the tables would open them up, pull the ballot, check the number on the ballot and the envelope, so that they coincided. They would separate them, they would have their pile of ballots and the envelopes, and at that point, they were separated.
So they didn't really have to open the envelope. Theoretically, they had to just check it, take out the secure, I mean, it's a, let's describe it to people, as an outer envelope, and that has the name, address, the district in which they are voting, and a signature.
Right.
That's how you identify it.
Right.
The inner envelope is called a secure envelope.
There was one envelope. It was the green envelope. There are not two envelopes, there's just the one.
Wait, 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 wait. There was just one envelope?
One envelope.
And a ballot inside?
Yes.
A naked ballot inside? Not in a secure envelope?
No, there were not two envelopes. Maybe, correct? The green envelope is the only envelope that we have, and we sign.
Well, no, no, there's supposed to be a secure envelope inside, because your ballot is supposed to be anonymous.
There were not two envelopes. There was one envelope. It was a green...
Well, that may explain why they were open.
Right. They went through some sort of a system where they opened them. But we signed the back of our envelopes, and on the front of that envelope is the mailing address to the county.
Did you mail, did you do a mail-in vote?
Did I personally? I hand-carried mine and put it in.
But you do it, was it a mail-in vote?
Yes.
Well, was there an envelope you had to put the ballot in?
Yes, a green envelope, one envelope.
One envelope and the naked ballot?
Correct.
No other envelope?
No duplicate. And in other states that I have lived in...
Yes, yes, yes.
There were two envelopes.
Okay. So when it came in, it was open already?
Yes.
And all they did was separate it?
Right.
Did they look at the back of the envelope?
No, because the envelopes are, I believe, are scanned in, and the signature verification room is where that, that number that is on the envelope coincides with the signature, and those are scanned in. So my understanding is that in the signature verification room, they do not know any, anything that's on the ballot. They only have the signature, and they are checking, checking it against other signatures, driver's license, previous voting...
Did you see that done?
That's what I was trying to see in the signature verification room.
Did you ever get to see it?
Just that one gentleman who was doing low confidence and then switched to high confidence.
And you were the only Republican doing that, too?
I was the only one in that room.
So if you weren't doing it, nobody else was?
Correct.
So that was all being done secretly? Well, secretly meaning without any Republican observers?
Right. Because the rest of the room was full. There were maybe 14 computers there, and they, it was full, and, and they were all, I couldn't see any of them.
So how many, how many of these ballots would you estimate went into the vote without a Republican getting a chance to even glimpse at the envelope?
As much as I would like to answer that, I can't even guesstimate. It was an entire afternoon.
How long were you there?
I was, I was there two afternoons.
For how long each afternoon?
Four hours.
And how many ballots could they do in an hour?
Well, this was interesting. Some of them would click, 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 click without really looking at them. They would just sort of glance at it and go on to the next one and go on to the next one. There was one gentleman that seemed a little more intent on actually looking at the signatures that he was comparing to, and he would take maybe 10 or 15 seconds per signature. But some of them just kept clicking and clicking and clicking.
And how many, how many of these tables were doing it?
Well, the first day I was there, I believe there were eight...
Eight?
Eight computers, eight different people. There might have even been nine, eight to nine people. The second day, I believe the room holds almost 20 people, and it was pretty full.
Pretty much 20 people? So were they doing one a minute?
Oh, no, seconds. Oh, one per...
One every two or three seconds?
Well, one gentleman was clicking and clicking and clicking. I'm not sure what he was looking at, but he wasn't looking too...
What do you think would be a good estimate? One per?
An estimate probably would be one every, oh, maybe eight to 10 seconds.
Okay, let's say 10 seconds, one per 10 seconds.
Okay, so six per...
And how many hours were you there?
I was there four hours.
Four hours.
He's doing the math.
Four hours the first day, when you had the eight to nine?
Right.
And then four hours the second day, when you had the 20 people?
Correct.
And that was the day the press was there?
Right.
Gee, how did I know that?
That was in the ballot processing room, though. They were not in the...
Were they all dressed, were they all dressed up better?
Pardon?
Were they all dressed up better when the press was there and had more makeup on?
A couple of them, yes.
Just wondering.
Yeah.
So that, I mean, that's a lot of ballots that you didn't get to examine.
Right.
I mean, that's a lot of fraudulent ballots to stuff in in a day, in two days.
But that was just two days.
Have you realized the enormity of the cheating that was going on in front of you? Do you have any sense of the, I mean, these are going to amount to thousands of votes that were put into the system without any opportunity for the opposition to observe them, which the law demands and fairness requires?
I went home that night, and I could not stop thinking about what I had seen.
I bet you couldn't.
I was so disturbed by it. I contacted Gina Swoboda, who was my contact person, and arranged me, for me to observe. And I, first I texted her, she asked me to write an email, and then I got very specific in my email. I was so disturbed by what I had seen. I went into this in good faith, that people did the right thing, and that's not what I saw. I've never had the opportunity to provide a civic service like this before, and I was truly astounded at what I saw. And the way I was, people were polite, but the way I was treated, "Go sit over there." I was at that black curtain, and the closest table to me was further away than I am from that black curtain.
And you did this for no compensation? And tell us the reason again you did it?
I did it because I have, I'm a retired university professor, and I wanted to be involved in this process. I believe in our country. I believe in this process.
Thank you.
And I'm, I'm so disappointed in what I saw.
You're shocked?
I was shocked, absolutely shocked. And at first, I thought, "Maybe it's me. I've not done this before. I don't really know specifically what I should be looking for." But it didn't feel right. I didn't know what it really meant, but it didn't feel right, and the way things appeared, especially in the signature verification room, really disturbed me.
I'm very sorry for what happened here. It shouldn't happen in America.
That's why I'm here.
That should happen in China or Venezuela.
Well, that's why I'm here today.
Well, maybe you'll make it back into America. Help us become America again.
I would like to. Thank you.
Not so fast. Members, any questions? Representative Barto.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. This was really troubling. I mean, when you think about signature verification, that's so basic. I just have a question about how this works out. From your observation, does each click mean that it was accepted? You're talking about the clicks.
I, I don't know.
So there could, there could be a click that it's not accepted?
I, and this was something that I, I can't answer. I don't really know that.
Well, if it wasn't accepted, did, do you know what happens to those ballots that were not accepted? That they go somewhere else, that you observed where they would be adjudicated properly?
Well, later on, I found out that some of them would go to somebody else, and they would follow up on them. But my thinking was, there were so many that were, that weren't even close to the signature. How could they possibly follow up on those? So I don't really know where they went, and, and the clicking was, I, I didn't know. I tried to look. I tried to see what they were doing, but, and when I asked questions, I was shut down.
You weren't, you couldn't tell whether they were clicking accepted or not accepted?
No, there was nothing on the screen to indicate that. It was strictly on the keyboard.
Why have poll observers? I, I don't understand.
I know. I was, that was my question after the first day, and then after the second day, I was really disturbed. Thank you.
Senator Borelli.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Burns, thank you for your, your service.
Thank you.
My, my question goes back to the ballots coming out of the mailroom. They were already opened up?
Yes.
So would you suspect that possibility that they were opened up in the mailroom and a ballot was switched out and put in?
I would have no idea on that.
Could you speculate on that?
It would be possible.
Extremely possible?
Yes, it would be possible.
Let me ask you another question. In your teaching profession in all those years, if you caught a student cheating, what would your response be?
Oh, I wouldn't be very happy about it, and they would be in great trouble, and after a phone call home, they probably would fail.
Thank you very much, ma'am. I'm sure we all feel the same way. Thank you.
Dr. Burns, I want to, forgive me, I want to kind of run back at the envelope thing, because apparently Maricopa County runs differently than Pima County, which is where I'm from.
Okay.
So when, when a PEVL ballot is returned, a permanent early voter list ballot, that's what P-E-V-L stands for, when you return that, it's an envelope inside of an envelope with a ballot on the inside. And what I hear you saying, I just need to be crystal clear on this.
Right.
The tubs that you saw with envelopes were singular envelopes with a ballot in them, all open?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm sorry, Senator Allen?
Yes, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Burns. I, I'm really curious about the, the low confidence and the high confidence. It's got me really curious. And you're saying that the screen with the low confidence, you couldn't see that the signature matched at all to any of, okay, so they're looking at one signature and trying to match it to other signatures that are on the page?
Yes.
Am I getting that right?
Yes.
And, and you could see that, from where you were sitting, that the signature did not match any of those?
Most of them did not match any of the ones they were trying to match it to. It wasn't, in many cases, not all, it was just a scribble. It was just a flick of the hand.
So, ma'am, maybe the low confidence might mean, "I'm not sure that this matches, but I'm going to pass it off anyway," or something? I don't know. That's, that's kind of what I'm thinking maybe that it means.
Well, that was the impression that I had.
Yeah.
And I think many of them were passed on, and that was my concern and what truly bothered me.
Thank you.
Dr. Burns, just really quick, I, I know that you probably would like to get out of this chair.
No, that's fine.
When you were watching that, and this is just a real simple response I'm looking for, did you notice any stark differences? For example, you said a scribble. Well, what we didn't hear is the signature they were comparing it to. Was it so clear and convincing to you that it's like, "This is a signature, this is a chicken scratch"?
Right. It was that clear to me on many of them.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Just a moment.
Two, two quick ones.
Two quick ones.
What did you teach?
I was a director of choral activities in music.
I was hoping you taught ethics. Maybe you should now.
And, and as you now know, I didn't teach math.
Well, I, I, I don't do math very well either, but I, I just want to tell you, I computed what you said, four hours, eight or nine tables the first day, one per 10 seconds. That'd be about 12,000 ballots that went in that were unobserved. The second day, we had 20 people, that'd be 150,000. That's a lot of votes.
It was.
That's way more than the votes that decided this election. Way more. So if this is true, and we have no reason to believe it isn't true, I mean, all these people who are so upset, saying that they cheated, are, have to confront the fact that there are numerous American citizens who were sworn under oath that they did cheat. You, you gave us an affidavit under oath, didn't you?
Yes, sir.
You understand what that means, right?
Yes, I do.
I'm sure you do. Thank you. Thank you very much, and God bless you.
Thank you. Now?
Ma'am?
Oh, one more question.
Okay, looks like we, we're not going to get out of the question zone quite yet.
That's okay.
Representative Roberts, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chairman. Dr. Burns, you said earlier that when you were looking at it, and they were saying that it was in yellow and there was low confidence, that you asked about it, and they told you that it was a new program that they were testing?
Yes.
And they were testing this new program on live ballots?
This is what I was told.
Did they give you any further explanation on that?
Nope.
Okay.
No.
And one other thing, you also mentioned that you had concerns about where you were sitting after you were, you had got up and walked around, and you were told not so nicely to sit. That you had concerns about a masking tape issue that kind of went on for the better part of the day, and you asked about that. Did you ever get an answer on that, if that was, there was a, an issue with that?
I was told not to worry about it.
Oh.
By the supervisor.
Not to worry about it.
And that's, yes, and that's when I called. I, I did that very early in the morning. Voting had just started, and this obviously was going to be an issue right from the get-go of voting that day. And it was the first day of early voting, so they had not come across this. People did not want to take off their masks and seal their envelopes. So within the first, oh, 15 to 20 people that came through, I would say at least So within the first, oh, 15 to 20 people that came through, I would say at least half of those, if not more, had masking tape put on them because they couldn't seal the envelope. Some tried water on the sticky part, and by the time they put water on it, there wasn't enough on there to seal it. But they just went ahead and put it in the --
Right. When you asked about this, and you were told not to worry about it, who were you speaking with?
The supervisor at the precinct where I was observing.
And that supervisor is a county employee? Is that correct? It's not somebody that --
I don't think so.
Because you're there on a -- because you're a volunteer.
Volunteer basis, right.
And you're going through, you know, a partisan process to be a volunteer, correct? And so when you're reporting your concerns, you're talking to somebody that actually works for Maricopa County. They're an employee. It's not, you know?
She was a precinct captain, and somebody else might be able to address that more than I can. She was the supervisor that everybody came to if there were questions regarding anything or the machines when people would put in their driver's license. And there were actually a precinct captain and a precinct supervisor there. And those were the people that were in charge, as far as I could tell.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Fellow members on the panel, I just want to point out that not only this witness, but most witnesses, this is not a Republican or Democrat issue. Everything that we've talked about is about elections, and every vote counts, every legal vote counting, as we're getting beat up out there on the fake news media cycle here. So all of my questions have been answered except one. First of all, the low confidence signatures that you witnessed, which were just scribbled, no matter what party, who they were voting for, got ran through the machine, clicked on, moved on the system, they were not taken care of. The next thing is one of my colleagues brought up, is one of the things I had, is that the all ballots were open when you received them. All the ballots were open when they came in there, highly irregular. So I can't imagine anyone saying, out there tonight in the news media, that we are in here, and there is no proof about voter integrity and elections in Maricopa County. I just, it just baffles me. Baffles me. When these people have signed sworn affidavits that are saying, under the penalty of perjury, this is what they've witnessed, nothing to see here, move on. It's just nuts down here in this city. Okay, but here's the question I think that all the members should notice right here. I heard you say in your testimony, now correct me if I'm wrong, you emailed in detail to the correct people these highly irregular things that you witnessed during you volunteering for this position, volunteering, but I didn't, maybe I missed it. I didn't hear. Did you even get a response?
Yes, I did. And that's, well, let me think. I initially texted, I got a response requesting an email, and then it was at that point, after the election, that I was contacted to complete an affidavit.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Burns, thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you, sir.
Next up is Kathleen Alvey. Kathleen, are you in the building? All right. Kathleen, if you would, please come over, have a seat. If you would, please, give your name.
Kathleen.
Kathleen.
Alvey.
All right. Kathleen, and you're going to have to get a little bit closer to the microphone so folks can hear you. Please, if you would like to tell us your story.
I volunteered to do polling, and I received an email that Pima County Recorder's Office was not allowing us to be in the polls for early voting. So I ended up at the Pima County Election Center. I went on October 15th from 9:00 to 1:00, and I was escorted in by a supervisor. She kind of gave me the layout of what the different departments were. We saw offices when we first walked in, but we also saw some little cubicles. She walked me around inside the cubicle. There was one, and then behind that, there was a second one. And there was a little machine there. She said, "This is where the duplicates got entered in." And I asked her why there was only one chair in there. And she said, "Well, we don't have to do, worry about that right now, because it's not done until the 20th." And this was only the 15th. So she took me into a second room, and this had poll workers throughout the entire room. She said that the door to the east of us was for where they were verifying signatures, and that I was not supposed to go in there. She showed me around the room, and then she showed me a chair and said, "This is where you can sit." And I said, "Well, how can I observe if I'm sitting?" And so she allowed me to walk up and down the aisles of people and observe what they were doing. The first hour.
Excuse me just a moment.
Would it be all right if we just took a short break?
Sure.
Because we have somebody who wants to make a statement.
Oh, I'd be happy to accept that statement, Mr. Mayor.
And he's probably confused about the time.
Well, there's a lot of people that happens to in this state.
All right, thank you.
You want to use your phone?
Is this one on? Yes.
Yes, it is.
All right, so, Mr. President, your line is connected.
Well, thank you very much. I've been watching the hearings, and they're fascinating, incredible, and I want to just thank all of the people who helped out on doing this very brave thing. And I know some get heat, but I will tell you, many more get praise from the American public. We got 74 million votes, 11 million more votes than we had in 2016. We were looking to get about 68 million votes, and we said that would easily win. Well, we got 74 million votes, and getting above that number even could hit 75. But we got 74 million, and we didn't win. But I know that we won Arizona, and we won Michigan, and we won Georgia, and we won Pennsylvania, and we won Wisconsin. But what they did is they played games, and games like nobody's ever seen before. This is the first time Republicans, or first time anyone has fought back. The 2020 election was rigged. It was a scam, and the whole world is watching, and they're laughing at our country. They're laughing at us. They know who won, and we won by a lot. The poll watchers were thrown out of buildings or put at very faraway distances. But they were thrown out of buildings in numerous of the states. You have people that came in to vote, and they were told, "I'm sorry, but you've already voted. We've received your ballot." "No, I never voted. I'm very proud to vote November 3rd. I'm very proud to vote." "No, we have your ballot." And they would go in, and they would sign a complaint. In some cases, they went home, and they cried. They've never seen anything like it. We have thousands and thousands of people that walked in. This shows you how arrogant the Democrats and others were in taking away and stealing an election, because that's what they've tried to do, is steal it. And the easy route for me, when everyone's saying, "Oh, just focus on 2024, sir. Focus on 2024," I said, "No. I have to focus on two weeks ago, because this is the greatest scam ever perpetrated upon our country. This is the big one." And we went through plenty. We went through the phony Russia, 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 and the phony impeachment, and all of the different things. And then on top of it, you have a governor named Ducey, who just rushed. Couldn't have gone faster. He just rushed to sign certificates so that Kelly gets into the Senate as soon as possible. What's that all about? He didn't have to sign. And I say, "Why would he sign when you have these incredible hearings going on that's showing such corruption and such horrible fraud on the American people and the people of Arizona?" So you'll have to figure out, what's that all about with Ducey? It couldn't go fast enough. And I just say that I want to thank you. We're going to win this thing. We're not giving up. We're never going to give up. There's never been anything like this. Thousands and thousands of votes were cast, and you have some people that were paid to vote. You know that. And, you know, we're only down to 9,000 votes. It's a very small number of votes relative to millions cast. We lost Arizona by 9,000 votes. That's a tiny fraction. Now, that would be a half a day, a couple of hours of checking. Well, I will tell you, we are going to fight. We're taking it up all the way. We have additional cases being filed, probably tomorrow in Wisconsin and in Georgia. And they're good cases. They're very strong cases by great lawyers and with great facts. And Arizona will not forget what Ducey just did. We're not going to forget the people of Arizona. We had some of the greatest rallies we've ever had. I left those rallies. A lot of you probably were there, and I said, "There's no way we lose this state." And we didn't lose the state. We didn't lose the state. We won it by a lot. But I just want to thank everybody. I'm watching it, and a lot of people are watching it on OAN and a couple of others that are ratings machines. Their ratings are going through the roof because they're telling the truth. And others are being hurt, as you probably have heard. Other networks are being very badly hurt, because when they don't follow us, they don't do very well. But the world is watching, and this country is watching, and we admire all of the people. And that includes the fantastic representatives, politicians, but these representatives that are up there and doing a great job. And what they don't realize is, they may hear some things, but they're becoming legend. They're becoming legend for taking this on. The country really appreciates it. The country really does. And we have more than they do. I represent everybody, but this was a scam, and we have to get down to the bottom of it. I want to thank Rudy and his team for doing such an incredible job and for having the courage to do it. Many lawyers had to leave because they were threatened. So for having the courage, Rudy, we thank you. And, you know, Rudy was, and I say this, Rudy was the greatest mayor in the history of New York by far. You look at what happened in New York. I mean, you look at what's going on right now. He was the greatest we've ever had. And I told Rudy the other day, what you're doing right now concerning the elections of United States President and other elections, but concerning the election of the President of the United States, and as good as being mayor was, and so important, but this is far more important, is the most important thing you've ever done. So I want to thank Rudy. I want to thank all of the political representatives, and I want to thank all of the incredible witnesses for showing bravery and love of your country. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
I'm sorry for the interruption. So, Mr. Mayor, now that we've been upstaged seriously.
Oh, yes, oh, yes, yeah.
We would like to thank the President. I think that that was, that's what this team needed to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Kathleen, no pressure. So please proceed with your story, ma'am.
Okay. Well, I was observing the different tables, and the supervisors didn't stop me whatsoever. I walked up and down the aisles for all the four hours that I was there. After about the first hour, I noticed that there were a lot of ballots that were coming in, that were being removed from envelopes, that were faxed in. And the supervisor said, "Those are military or absentee." But there were hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of them coming in. And I asked, "Well, what is the chain of command? How do we know for sure that these faxes are accurate, and they're from the people who sent them?" And I said, "How do you verify a signature? If they've got the ballot and they have the envelope, why can't they just somehow get here in the envelope that they were originally given?" And she told me that there was not an answer that she could give me. She didn't know the answer, that I would have to ask the other supervisor. So when the other supervisor came in, I asked her the same thing, and she told me the exact same answer, that she didn't know that that all happened in the verification of signature section, and we weren't in that area. So we were, I was walking through again for a while, and then a representative from the Republican side at one of the tables that was working, actually as a poll worker, he asked the same question, and he got the same answer. There was no clear answer for him either. The ballots, when they were processed, were then put into these blue containers that were supposed to go to the front of the room. They were then sealed and locked by the supervisor. When I left at 1:00, there were still six sitting there with the supervisor out to lunch, and none of them were locked. Also, the ballots that were coming in, that were faxes, were called duplicates, because they had to be manually entered. They didn't get secured at all. They went into a little basket on the side of the room, and then women from another area came in and got them and left with them. So I never saw what happened with those. But those same women were also coming in, and they were taking the postage boxes full of ballots and leaving with them as well. And they were going to a different area of the facility that I was not given access to, because the room that I was in was, I was basically told, that's where all the processing went. But then I saw the ballots leaving. So when I left at 1:00, I immediately sent an email to the Chair of the Republican Party and said, "I have some concerns about this. First of all, the chain of custody for the ballots that are faxed in, but also because there were things that I wasn't seeing behind the scenes."
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Giuliani, do you have any questions for this lady?
Sure.
Please proceed.
Ms. Alvey, tell us the room that you were in. What was it, a tabulation room?
It was a tabula, well, there was no machines.
What was you calling it?
It was just a processing. There were workers at tables, and there was two different people from two different parties. And what they were doing was, they were working as a team. They would pull the ballots out of the envelopes that were signed. They were putting the signature envelopes to the side, and those went back in the boxes. But then the ballots were laid out flat. If there was any questions about it, if it was ripped, or if it had a signature, or if there's any kind of default on it, like, there was one gentleman who asked, because it was done in marker, and the supervisor told him, "Oh, it's okay. There's no problems with using markers on this." And she said, "Just send it through." And so he just processed it regularly. Other than that, at the other end of the room, though, there were people who were not taking ballots out of envelopes. They were just counting ballots. There was a machine, and a gentleman counting it with a machine. But then the people who were sitting at the tables, they actually had lists, and the lists needed to correspond with the ballots. So they would have a bundle of ballots. They would check the names. If it was all correct, they'd bundle it back up and put it back in. There was one woman who didn't have a ballot that matched her list, and she was walking through the aisles, looking for, like, boxes, because each of the ballot boxes that came through from the signature areas were labeled, like, B1, B2, B3. So she was looking for anyone who was tabulating or working with the boxes that had a B5 on it, because she had, there was a misplaced ballot from that group.
What day are we talking about?
October 15th.
October 15th. So this is early voting.
Correct.
Was that the only day you were there?
That was the only day I was there.
And what were you told you were there for?
I was told I was just there to observe, just watch, make sure that everything was on the up and up. When I first went in there, I did oversee a class for new poll workers that came in, so that I would kind of have an idea of what they were doing and how the process was done. I noticed, the nice thing that I noticed was, there were no pens in the room. So I didn't see anyone using a pen on any ballots at that point. It was all like Sharpie, or markers, colored markers, like highlighters. And there were red pens, but the red pens were for the duplicate ballots that came in. They were supposed to be numbered and isolated by precinct on a paste paper. And then those went to, like I said, the basket that then left the room, and I don't know where they went after that.
Where were the signatures being verified?
There was a room to the east of where we were at, behind closed doors, and that was a different section.
Did you get to observe that?
No, ma'am. No, sir.
How many Republican observers were there?
Well, the room was divided half and half of all different parties. So there were, at one table, there was a Republican and Democrat. There was a Republican and Independent. I saw a Democrat and a Green Party. I mean, each table had two different people, two different political affiliations.
These were tables after the envelope had already been examined?
Then those, then all the, well...
In a different room, right?
Right. That was done in a different room.
So who was observing that? Do you know?
I don't know. I don't know. I did give a list to Thomas Lane of all the people who were supposed to be observing through the whole election time.
So you don't know if there was observation of the signature verification?
I do not.
And then after the signature verification, the ballots were brought into your room?
Correct. There was large trays of ballots that were brought in.
And in your room, they were being counted?
There were some being counted off to the right of the room, and then in the area... Well, I was able to go into both because I was able to wander.
And what else were they doing with them, other than counting?
Well, they were counting, and then they were removing them from the envelopes.
They were being removed from... They hadn't been removed from the envelopes already?
No. No.
Okay.
Most of them were cut open, though. So all they had to do was reach in and pull out the insides.
And then you complained about this?
Well, I complained, not necessarily about this. I complained about the chain of command or the chain of custody that all of these faxes, because there were so many, and I questioned that because I wasn't sure... I mean, because I could be in Michigan, and I could fax something to Pima County, and it could be rerouted anywhere through any fax. And how do I know that it didn't come from Afghanistan?
Right.
So that was my concerns. And I was told by the Chairman of the Republican Party that a lot of people come away with frustrations like this because there are no good answers unless you're there watching and you know exactly where the faxes are coming from.
How many ballots were processed during this? How long were you there? How many hours?
I was there for four hours.
How many ballots you think were processed while you were there that you didn't get to observe?
I don't know because the boxes that left the room and the duplicates that left, I don't know where they went. So I don't know how many were in each sleeve of the post office boxes. I do know that in one box, just from observing, there could be anywhere from 100 to 300 ballots in one box. So...
What do you think? In four hours, how many of those boxes did they go through?
Well, when I left, they were on H.
Pardon me?
When I left, they were on the letter H. They were working on the Hs. So that would have been a couple hundred thousand.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Members, any questions?
I do.
Representative... Or, I'm sorry, Senator Allen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I want to talk a little bit more about the duplicates. From the duplicates, or they think there's something wrong with the ballot so it wouldn't process, so then they go and they make another ballot, another duplicate ballot. In that process, and you said, though, that when... Was there a lot of those duplicates?
Yes, thousands of them.
Thousands of them?
Yes. They were, at one point, that's all that they were processing, were the faxed ones.
Well, the faxed, okay, the faxed ones were saying they were from the military, and then they would go and make a duplicate of that to run through the thing. But here's what my concern is, that who then observes the person making the duplicate? Because they're going and marking another ballot, probably? Is that what they're doing? Or do they go and punch it into the machine? How do they make the next duplicate ballot? That's what I'd like to know. And is there two observers watching that to be sure that it is done correctly according to the original ballot and who they wanted to vote for?
I agree.
And if there's thousands involved, then I would be very concerned. There should absolutely be an observer and two people involved in processing that original document to be sure that the duplicate absolutely matches. And we've heard some of that today, and so that's my concern. And you just have no idea then how they process that?
No. Like I said, all the duplicates were put into a basket, and then someone came and cleared that basket every half an hour or so. But they were cleared out into a different room that I wasn't given access to. So I don't know how that was done. I do know that when I first came in, the supervisor showed me the little cubicle that was behind a cubicle, and she said that this is where the duplicates were manually entered in by a person. And that's when I questioned her about, "Are there two people here at the time?" And she said, "Well, because this is only the 15th, we don't have to worry about that right now because ballots don't get entered in until after the 20th."
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wish we had somebody from the Election Department that could help explain some of these questions that we have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. We appreciate your time. I know that you have been here for a number of hours waiting patiently, but I hope it was worth it.
Yes.
Thank you. It was for us.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Mark Lowe.
She gets surprised that the President interrupted her.
Yes, indeed. And then after Mark Lowe, Linda Brickman. Or maybe Linda Brickman now, and Mark Lowe's no longer here? Okay. Mr. Lowe appears to have left the building. So, Ms. Brickman. I'm sorry, Mrs. Brickman.
Would you like to give me this? Yeah, of course.
Please give your name and let us know what you know.
All right. My name is Linda Brickman.
You're going to need to get really close to the mic because people have been saying that they can't hear us.
Okay. My name is Linda Brickman, and I want to thank you, all of you legislators, chairman, and Mr. Mayor for letting me come forward and be able to speak today. Effective November 12, 2020, as the first Vice Chair of Maricopa County Republican Committee, the MRCRC, by operation of law upon the resignation of the Chairman, I took over the performance of the Chairman's duties. I was notified by Ray Valenzuela, Director of Elections, that the logic and accuracy LNA certification of the Dominion Voting Systems would take place on November 23. With limited notice, I was later notified the date was moved to November 18, 2020 at 10:00 a.m. There will be about 11 issues that I need to share with you today. For a little background, I arrived at Maricopa County Tabulations and Election Center, MECTAC, prior to 10:00 a.m. for what was supposed to be the morning turnaround inspection of the Dominion software and equipment. However, it took some eight hours before the two formal LNA certifications were completed with mixed results. We began in the BCC or tabulation room where the Dominion software and machines were set up ready for actual testing. There are about eight or nine regular versus high-speed machines set to tabulate all the numbers from the test ballots. As part of the SOS, or Secretary of State's Elections Office, the LNA certification, and one mainframe computer plugged into the wall, and a computer technician's workstation with a desktop computer to transfer results from the individual tabulators and into the server. This mainframe machine that I observed was to calculate all the test ballots and add up the zeros to give a grand total of all eight or nine machines that totaled the ballot count supposedly equaling zero. The problems had occurred almost from the start with the SOS certification. For example, a number of the ballots could not be read by the tabulator machines. At least one or more of the tabulators broke down, and portions had to be replaced. Incorrect information had been inputted into each tabulator earlier that morning, and the wrong files were loaded up into the mainframe by the computer technician. And neither the SOS Secretary of State staff nor the computer technician were able to quickly resolve the problems. Instead, we were all alerted that it might take an hour or more to work things out. So we all adjourned at 2:00 to take lunch. At approximately 2:00 p.m., I asked if the problems were resolved and what had happened. Instead, I was informed that the machines were not calculating correctly, and all the machines had to be shut down during a break, during the lunch break, and reset, and they were going to start on a brand-new test. About an hour plus later, the ballots were run into the tabulators and printouts. The results in the form of a cashier's tape were received by me and others. Then the memory sticks from each tabulator were removed and handed to the computer technician for loading into the server, along with other relevant files, as we were told. Printouts were then generated by the Dominion server, and county chairs from the three county political parties, as well as other observers, began comparing the individual voting totals tabulated for accuracy. Once completed, the county chairs were asked to fill out and sign the certification for the SOS LNA. As per Ray Valenzuela, the Director of Elections, and other observers, they were asked to sign if they insisted, but only as an observer capacity and not in an official capacity. Then it came time for us to sign the certification. Based on the issues described above with the SOS LNA test and my familiarity with reports from other states, Secretary of States, for example, Texas, and other information that I had and that I turned over to the BOSS, which is the Board of Supervisors, I went ahead and signed and denied certification, writing on the forum, quote, "Certification denied. Linda Brickman, MC, Maricopa County Chairman," unquote. We then began the second LNA test, but this one was conducted by Maricopa County election staff and on separate Dominion voting tabulation machines. This was a similar process with results going to the server, and reports were then again printed out. But for whatever problems or irregularities that surfaced during the first SOS test, they did not manifest this time. And then, for the same reasons noted above, I denied certification, writing on the Maricopa County forum, quote, "Certification denied. Linda Brickman, MC, Maricopa County Chairman," unquote. I also have copies of all the ballots counted with copies available upon request later. Again, my reasons, as noted, were above my firsthand observations of the flaws and irregularities in the SOS LNA tabulating and calculating of the Dominion software, the unexplained turning off of the computer system, and doing a reset versus a correction, and the over five hours for the SOS test and results review, plus my lack of faith in the second LNA test. We could see the machines, but we could not see or observe the software behind the machine to confirm what had really gone on. As a veteran county elections worker who actually worked the election both during the August primary and the general from 10/1920 to 11/11/20, working on signature verification room, duplication room, adjudication room, ABC room, and the hand count audit, let me share at least six irregularities that I personally observed. Number one, signature verification standards were constantly being lowered by supervisors in order to move more quickly and process the higher amount of early and mail-in ballots from approximately 15 points of similarities, where you see a rounded L or a straight line, a number of different similarities that we were told through maybe an hour process of training prior to all this beginning. From the 15 points of similarities, reduced to a minimum of three, lowered to one, and ultimately, none, just passed each signature verification through, we were told. Too many rejections have already been turned in and reviewed. We need to move more quickly. This is not the way an election should be run. Where is the integrity? Two, alleged signatures and challenged signatures on envelopes where the signature was completely different from the person and the name as listed voter. These were let through and approved by supervisors. So the ones who signed the envelopes were not the actual voter, but these were allowed to go through with Maricopa County verified stamped on the outside of each affidavit envelope. Three, challenged runs or batches of envelopes for signatures verification observed by me to be the exact same handwriting on the affidavit envelopes. And these were on various ballots. I saved what was the ballot number, and I believe I've turned it in. If not, I do have that information, where there were at least 30 ballots that I saw at one time that were all signed by the same handwriting but on different voters' names. When I asked the county attorney if the, when I asked if the county attorney would be alerted for possible fraud, I was told no, but supervisors would take care of it. In the dupes room, number four, and this is the duplica... Excuse me, the duplication room, I observed with my Democratic partner the preparation of a new ballot since the original one was soiled or wouldn't go through the tabulators. I read her a Trump Republican ballot, and as soon as she entered it into the system, the ballot defaulted on the screen to a Biden Democratic ballot. We reported this to the supervisors, and others in the room commented that they had witnessed the same manipulation. We were never told what, if any corrective action was taken. All I know is the next day, I was called outside the room that I was working in signature verification by the supervisor, saying, "I understand you caused some problems this week," and saying that you thought our machines were not working correctly. And I was being the one that was scolded. And I was told at that point in time, I could not discuss anything or talk about what was going on, as many people were threatened because they were told that their voices would be suppressed. They would either have to leave the room and not work there again. I'm here because I think this is our duty to speak the truth and hear the truth. Number five, election office observers. When it became apparent that more and more early and mail-in ballots need to be processed, I mentioned that the current role of the number of observers per party was not adequate. One per party unless all parties agreed to more. And since the governor refused to call the legislature into session for whatever his reasons, and little incentive for the Democrats to agree to a higher adequate number, there was no way that one observer per party who were forced to the back of the room or to have to watch behind a closed-in wall or a see-through wall would have legitimate opportunity to see what election workers were actually seeing in real time and doing, especially where up to 20 or more workers processing tests, sometimes in 10 seconds or less. And I personally observed most observers acting clueless, and did not believe any of them even recognized the challenges that I was referencing above. Number six, one of the most egregious. In both the duplication and adjudication rooms, which I worked, I observed the problem of Trump votes with voters checking the bubble for a vote for Trump, but also writing in the name Donald Trump under the writing candidate and checking the bubble next to his handwritten name again as a duplicated vote. And this would continue on as an overvote, which means no vote was counted at all despite the policy having been changed to allow these overvotes. Supervisors contradicted their own policies where the intent was clear. Ray Valenzuela, Director of Elections, told me openly the morning of the Dominion certification November 15... November 18, 2020, that this was incorrect. The supervisors were terribly mistaken, and as an adjudicator, I was-
It was a matter of laziness or incompetence, and they never got it. You're telling me he knew this?
Yes.
Wow. Okay. Mm-hmm. Wow. Okay.
Please.
Thank you.
Mr. Biussucci.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Linda, thank you for being here, and I appreciate all you've done, you know, for the party. I just, something you said that really bothered me to even hear this is even a possibility, but you mentioned that in the duplication room, you saw Trump ballots counting as Biden ballots, Biden votes, right? Trump votes were being counted as Biden votes. Now, I just want to be clear here. You gave an affidavit, right? This is under oath, this is the truth. You witnessed that happening-
Yes, sir.
-in the room.
More than once.
More than once. And the explanation from the supervisor was what?
Right. I am not going to listen to this. If you have to be removed from the building, you will be. You're interrupting testimony and questioning. End it. End it.
Hold on just a second.
Mr. Biussucci.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mrs. Brickman, just, yeah, I think you just repeat that for one more time, and what was the reaction from the supervisor when you asked him that question?
Mr. Chairman, legislators, we reported this ballot default in the screen as a Biden Democratic ballot. We reported this to the supervisors and others in the room, commented that they had witnessed the same manipulation at other times. We were never told what, if any, corrective action was taken. Nothing that I know of had ever been corrected. And as I believe I mentioned right after that, I was yelled at, whatever, reprimanded the next day by my own supervisor for causing trouble and bringing up things that I shouldn't have been bringing up.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
Representative, I'm sorry, Senator Allen, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Linda, it's so good to see you again, and thank you for hanging in there and keeping doing the work that you're doing. I would like to bring up what the Maricopa County supervisor said in their letter when they certified the Maricopa County vote. They said the Dominion tabulation equipment was bedded by a bipartisan equipment advisory committee before the contract was finalized. The committee tested the functionality and accuracy of the tabulation equipment before it was used in any Arizona election. The Dominion tabulation equipment met mandatory requirements during the accuracy test before the presidential, primary, and general election, and after each of these 2020 elections, the hand-count audit shows the machines generated an accurate count. And so, it's interesting to hear, as you talk about being there, as they're showing, testing the machines, and all the breakdowns and the problems that went on. Was not, were the supervisors not made aware of the problems that came up when you were doing the audit?
It's difficult that they didn't, weren't aware of it, because I was aware of it. I'm- The supervisors, as well as the governor's staff, as well- I find it difficult that they did not know. Why is it- Systems were being used, and that the machine wasn't changed. I believe in almost all locations, were shut down at the exact same time, as while I was working at the Elections Department, the machines were shut down.
Did you get to see, because the previous person that gave testimony, I asked this question about my concerns over the duplication thing, who is there being sure that it's entered into the machine properly and correctly, and it's observed? So can you tell me more about that process? How's that done, the duplication process?
Okay. This was only for the general election now, because I worked it also during the primaries, so I'm always speaking about it for the general. A machine is put before you, oh, about, I would say this high, this wide, and the actual ballot, the person's ballot, your ballot, sir, could be on the left-hand side. A blank ballot is then placed on the screen, the same screen, and we are to duplicate the votes from the person's ballot over to the right, with the intent, and that's the magic word, the intent, of the voter. Most of the things that go through the duplication room, not the adjudication room, are because they're soiled or they're damaged, they could be ripped, it could be a number of reasons why it wouldn't go through the tabulation machine, so we had to duplicate it to a clean ballot. My Democratic partner, whom I worked with for quite a while, I worked in there for a good four days, probably eight to 10 hours a day. So we did this on a number of ballots, and you asked me how many ballots. We could get through a ballot in about 15 seconds of figuring it out over a 10-hour day, over three days, that's how many ballots we could see. When we had a chance to go ahead and start moving all the names from the original ballot over to the sample ballot, some of those ballots were already completed, they were pre-filled out with names. So we had to go ahead and erase all the names on the right-hand side. Could have been Democrat, could have been Republican, could have been Independent. We didn't look, we just had to erase all those existing names that were already inputted on those ballots, on the duplicated one. We started moving the names over, and we would check each other as a Democrat and Republican to make sure that we were correcting each other. No supervisors, no observers were behind us at all times. There are observers, which were very few and far between in that room, never came back to where we were, we were behind the adjudication room. So it was difficult, at best, to see anything. There was a full wall there, nobody could see through it, unless you're Superman. We started moving all the names from the actual ballot over to the regular ballot. Again, we had to even move all the ballots, if there were two for Trump, one that was handwritten, one that wasn't. So it wouldn't be counted at all, because we were told it was an overvote, we had to follow the exact same ballot. When we were ready to push, pass through at the very bottom, it was just vote okay, we could see that all of a sudden, the ballot was being reverted back to either a Democratic Biden ballot, or, and this didn't happen every time, but more often than not, it was going back to a Democratic ballot, or it would just revert back to whatever names had been on that ballot when we started. So we could never judge whether that ballot was actual, and we didn't have any recourse. We couldn't go back. Once it's in the system, it's in the system.
Once it's in the system, in other words, you couldn't correct, you couldn't correct it, because once you push the button, then it's in the system, and you can't go and say, "Wait, wait, Dave, that's not what I entered."
No, not, once it's already through, no. The only other time that we would have an option to be able to see that ballot is at the very end of the day, when we would, and each team would get a whole list of how many ballots they had looked at. We would, if there were any problems with it, we would check on that mimeograph form to see if it was correct or not correct, or if a certain judge was put in or not put in, if, you know, whatever that voter intended. If it still seemed to be a problem where my partner and I didn't agree with the way it came across, we could go to our supervisor, who, gentleman's name was Bruce, neither Bruce or John, we would go to one of them and ask them, "Would you please check the machine, or check your records to see if these were correct?" And we had a number of times that we had to go back in, and they said, "Yeah, this is the vote that was put in," and it was sometimes correct and sometimes not.
Thank you.
But we couldn't change it at that point.
Mrs. Brickman, I have a question for you, and it's been alleged, and I don't know if, I know that you have had something to do with the whole machine certification and all that. It's been alleged that there were certain machines that were swapped out on the day of the election that were actually not certified. Can you confirm that or dispute that?
I could not say anything to that, I don't know, sir.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Giuliani, do you have any more questions?
Just, just a few, because I'm struck by the fact that we're kind of ending where we began.
We still have-
Colonel Coulson, Phil here testified at the very beginning about Dominion, and now Ms. Brickman is telling us pretty much the same things. I didn't realize, you know quite a bit about Dominion.
I'm learning very quickly.
And is it, is it correct that it has an association with Smartmatic?
Yes.
And Smartmatic is a Venezuelan-
Yes.
-company that was started by Chavez in 2003, 2004, for the purpose of fixing elections?
Yes, sir.
And then, then Smartmatic worked with a company called Sequoia, I'm trying to simplify this, and Sequoia did an election in Chicago that was, even by Chicago standards, so bad that they fired Sequoia and Smartmatic. Can you imagine how bad it was for Chicago to fire them? And then there was a congressional hearing, that's in the record, in the congressional record, from which I read you Carolyn Maloney's letter. All you have to do is read her letter, and it tells you that the company has Venezuelan origins, and was invented for the purpose of fixing elections. And then, because you couldn't use the name Sequoia or Smartmatic anymore, Dominion acquired Sequoia, which had all the Smartmatic software, and had all the Smartmatic sneaky games and algorithms in it, which also involved Chinese technology, and they started using it under the name Dominion, but were never disclosed to history. But you would think that any prudent governor, Secretary of State, or Commissioner of Elections would do the kind of, the kind of research that you do when you give out a multimillion-dollar contract. I mean, I ran a city, and when I gave out multimillion-dollar contracts, the company was scrubbed very, very carefully. And if this had ever happened to me, when I was the mayor, everybody who did it would be fired immediately and investigated. I wouldn't want my city having its votes counted by a Canadian company, much less a company involved with Venezuela. So you are corroborating the facts that our expert witness gave at the very beginning of the hearing, and I really appreciate very, very much your contribution. And also because Dominion has created this problem all over our country, not just here in Arizona. You shouldn't feel alone. Our country was victimized by these people in a very, very horrid and disgusting way. And thank you.
Representative Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Linda. I have a couple of quick questions for you. First one is, do you think what we're doing here today is useful or a waste of time?
Mr. Chairman, legislators, I think it's very definitely something that we needed to be done. We need to go ahead and take this to you as the legislators, whether we have the governor behind us or not, he's never been behind us and never will be. This is something that you, in your right minds, as American citizens, as voters, in Arizona, need to do for us, and I thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for saying that, and I believe that, yeah, go ahead. I believe that this is not in vain, some have called it a dog and pony show. I think that it's showing the public what we're dealing with, and I hope it shows our leaders that we need to look into this further. Are you familiar with the DEFCON conferences that the Maricopa County Recorder has sent staff and himself to on taxpayer money? Are you aware of that?
No, I'm not, I'm sorry.
Well, let me read you the results of the two years ago. It says, "This is the third year we've hosted the Voting Village, and this year, we were able to give attendees access to over 100 machines, all of which are currently certified for use in at least one U.S. jurisdiction. Units tested included direct recording electronic voting machines, electronic poll books, ballot-marking devices, optical scanners, and hybrid systems. The hackers at DEFCON once again compromised every single machine over the two-and-a-half-day event, many of them with trivial attacks that require no sophistication or special knowledge on the part of the attacker." And I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead further on in the comments. "In too many cases, physical ports remain unprotected, passwords remain unset or left in default configurations, and security features of the underlying commercial hardware are left unused or disabled. In addition to showing the security weakness found in the wide variety of election tech on display, the Voting Village's team report shares, and this is important, its strong recommendations for improving election security, most notably, the urgent need for paper ballots and rigorous post-election audits." So what we've done here today, I think, is established that we need rigorous, a rigorous post-election audit. They also go on to recommend that people get the attention of their elected representatives, that's what you guys have done here today, I appreciate that, and so thank you, Adrian Fontes, for bringing this to our attention, that we do need to have rigorous post-election audits, and that these machines are not secure. I also want to mention briefly that in Texas, three generations ago, that the county supervisors had talked about, that these, these election machines, excuse me.
They rejected it.
They rejected it, and we haven't done anything this time to make sure that that rejection was corrected. How do you feel about that?
I think they should all be rejected in every one of the six swing states. Obviously, Arizona, which, how it's happened, I'll say it again, I think it was bought and paid for by a few people at the top, and that's why it was not taken care of, but this needs to be done in every single state, not just the six swing, six swing states.
Thank you, Mrs. Brickman.
Mr. Chairman, I have two quick questions that are not very long at all.
Okay, are these something that's already been covered, or?
It's the clarification on the, on the write-in ballots. And then I have a question for Mr. Mayor Giuliani, that he made a comment during his statement.
All right, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it has to be clear, I'm confused a little bit, you covered it, Mr. Chairman, so when these ballots were there, if there was a ballot, because here's the problem, Republicans won the state of Arizona except for the two big offices. All the supervisors were voted in, Fontes lost, I mean, Republicans, the legislature remained in control. So that all happened, but what you mentioned was that if a checkmark was for President Trump, and then a write-in candidate, even if it said Trump, that ballot wasn't counted?
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I think needs to be clear. Thank you very much. And, Mr. Chairman, Mayor, did I hear you correctly that says, and you haven't said it at all today, did you ask to meet with our governor, Doug Ducey, and he declined to meet with you?
Yes, sir. I texted him yesterday, the day before yesterday. I explained to him I was coming here, I explained why, and he never responded.
He did not even respond, sir?
Didn't respond, I explained to him I'm the president's lawyer, and I'd like to have the courtesy of meeting with you.
Mr. Chairman, Mayor, you were mayor of one of, if not the largest, city on the East Coast as a Republican, and, which has more people in that city than this state, and I think out of common courtesy and being on the same team, I apologize on behalf of whoever, if they dropped the ball, not responding to you.
I mean, I, I've been doing this kind of investigation for 50 years, and when people don't want to meet with me to hear the facts, I can kind of figure out why they're doing it.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for being here, sir.
All right. We have our last witness, Mr. Mark Low. Are you in the building, or have you gone home? Senator Gowen. Hold on, Ms. Brickman. Not done yet, I guess. Mr. Gowen.
Hello, Linda. Are we there? Hello, Linda. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, I just, one question, that's it. Sounds like you're verifying what the Colonel spoke about earlier, when I saw in your first issue here, where signatures were for verification and the standards. You were saying at first, they were- You were saying at first they were high, and then they continued to get lower and lower standards, and then finally there were no standards, and I heard a couple others who were earlier saying it was like chicken scratch, but they were just saying, "Let's get through that"?
That's correct, because we were told by our supervisors in the room that too many rejections of ballots had been thrown back because of not being able to verify--
Verify.
Verify, thank you. Verify the signature that it didn't match the original ballot or the original signature when the person registered to vote. So they said, "Speed it up."
So they directly told you that?
They did.
So there were, in your opinion, there are ballots out there that were counted as a vote that the signature was not verified on an early ballot?
Correct. Or there was no signature at all on the outside of the ballot. It was just a scribble or some people signed with a heart. It was not a valid signature.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, we're done? All right. Thank you very much, Mrs. Brickman. All right, we have one more witness, and that is Mark Lowe. Once Mr. Lowe is complete, Mr. Giuliani, I'd like you to wrap us up with your closing comments, and then each member will have an opportunity to-- I guess I'm overruled. There are four more people on the list that are still here. Oh, all right. I had called names and nobody stepped forward, so, okay. Mr. Lowe, please give your name and what you do, and we're happy to take your testimony.
Distinguished legislators, my name is Mark Lowe. I'm a Maricopa County resident for 30 years, a Southern California refugee. I'm here in the capacity of steadfast, concerned citizen. I volunteered to do three days of observation, two at the Maricopa County Recorder's Tabulation Center, Sunday, October 25th, and Sunday, November 1st. Sorry, I'm a little bit nervous. Been waiting all day to speak with you folks. On the 25th of October, I observed no ballot tabulation happening. There was simply adjudication. Approximately 12% of the vote, of 100,000 votes a day, needed to be adjudicated to determine the value or the voter's intent. So I watched that and got a good cook's tour of the entire operation. Everybody seemed to be cooperating with, doing their job and being very open and transparent. When I approached the gentleman who was running the Dominion machinery and computer software, and I don't have his last name, I have his first name, I'm trying to get his last name, because I had indicated that I was concerned that using a computer such as that, that a 14-year-old could hack into the system and change the votes at any point in time, and he kind of laughed and chuckled and kind of just shrugged off my concerns. And I told him that I had just watched a month earlier a Tom Cruise Mission Impossible, where Tom Cruise crawled through the ventilation system and went into a room very much like what the equipment is in, and he was able to get in and get the information and get out. And at that point, he really laughed, and he tried to point, he did point to all the wiring that was hanging from the ceiling and baskets, and so that there was nothing plugged to the internet or into walls, everything was coming from the master sealed-up room. And I said, "Well, in the end, a 14-year-old could get in and hack it. At least that's the world I live in, because I watched the 1969 original Mission Impossible, so a lot's happened since then." The following Sunday, I actually left about 2:30 in the afternoon. I was scheduled to work until 4:30, but I felt that I had better things to do, given what I had seen, and there was no tabulation going on. So I came back there bright and early for morning shift on 11:01, and I showed up and the operators were there, same gentleman that was running the operation, I'll leave him nameless, he's named in my affidavit. And I was able to say good morning to him and said, "Yeah," I said, "I guess nothing's happening with the 14-year-old yet," and kind of made light of it, sat down, and then a gentleman came to join me, because I was by myself as a Republican observer on the 25th. But on 11:01, Greg, who testified earlier before your panel, who's very, very knowledgeable about software and internet technology, he and I spoke for a few minutes before the process started, and I was able to explain to him how I engaged Bruce the week before, and felt really I didn't, just wasn't able to get the information from Bruce or acknowledge what was going on with the process of counting the votes or collecting the votes, because I didn't have the knowledge. Well, it turns out that Greg had more than enough knowledge for this gentleman. I call him the master of ceremonies for Dominion, because he's a contracted party, third-party by the county, he's actually paid by Dominion, and Dominion is paid by the county. So about 20, 30 minutes, I guess, into the operation, one of the smaller, older machines had a problem where it got locked up and it stopped working, stopped counting ballots, and this gentleman, master of ceremonies, came over with his laptop and plugged right into that machine, and he began to immediately do whatever he was doing with the files. And this is when Greg and I sprung to our feet, and Greg took the lead and went over his shoulder and looked exactly what he was doing and asking him questions all along. And he was able to actually get hard data of what was being done with regards to when a file gets too full, it stops, and it has to make subsets and all of that. The questions that I had on Sunday previous is, "How does he back it up?" But I could never get to that point on Sunday, the 25th. But on Sunday, the 1st, with Greg's expert questioning and knowledge and understanding of what was going on, he took him through the entire process to where, how the votes were manipulated, not, how the votes were handled, and how they were, when it got to be too big a file, they had to make subfolders. And then the question came up, how do you, my whole thing is, "What happens if this building burns down? What happens to the information?" So with that, along with that question hanging from the previous week, and Greg saying, yeah, he took him right to the point at, "Well, at what point do you make a copy? A data, and how do you make the copy?" And from what I recall, and the understanding is that, my understanding is that he makes a complete copy of the entire voter file. And at the end of the shift, he leaves the building with it. I say, "He takes it home." According to, Greg heard him say, "He takes it upstairs." I talked to Greg one other time, not to compare, not to compare our testimony, but to say what I remember, he took it out of the building and he took it home, as far as I'm concerned. I did not hear him say that he gave it to somebody else or anything. It was all in this gentleman's possession the entire time, because he brought it back with him the next morning. The hard drive came back and forth, in and out of the building, unsupervised, with no oversight whatsoever. Okay. There are some other problems with adjudication, but I'll leave that for another time. I want to say that on my day of the 3rd, when I showed up to, at 4701 South 7th Street, at 6:30 in the morning, I was greeted by the poll supervisor, who immediately noticed I was a Republican observer and told me that there would be no bathroom facilities for me to use at this beautiful, brand-new, multimillion-dollar high school that was built, academy, that there would be no bathroom facilities, and if I had to use the restroom, I'd have to go off-site. And I did, to which I answered, "That's fine, I'll just, I have some containers here, I'll be able to," kiddingly, "I'll be able to find a quiet corner and use it to relieve myself, whatever." So about 10 o'clock in the morning, and after a very slow trickle of people coming in, because I counted votes until I was ejected at 2:00 p.m., and I'll tell you the reason for that, but there was less than 200 people by 2:00 p.m. And so at noon, when I got up to use the restroom at 10:00, I came back and there were two voting machines there, and with a trickle of people, there must have, at that point, there was only at 10 o'clock maybe 50 or 60 people that had voted. And I was curious as to why there were two of these machines and two ballot boxes, so I paused as I was returning to my seat, because a woman was coming to put her vote in the machines, and I was going to determine which machine is she putting in, is she being directed to put it in one machine or the other. And at that point, the poll supervisor told me to get back to my seat or I would be removed from the property, because I'm not following orders or following her direction specifically, that I was to sit in my chair the entire time, which is far away from being able to see anything. So I went back and I sat compliantly, and I was kiveting with the Democratic observer, talking about life in general, and she kept coming over to me, says, "If you speak anymore, you're going to be ejected." So I literally, at 12:00 noon, before, I zipped my mouth and didn't say another word, I asked her, "So at 7:00, what will happen when it's time to break down the machines and take the votes, seal the votes in a container, and take them to the counting tabulation center?" And she said, "Well, you'll have to leave the building." I said, "But that doesn't feel right to me, because I'm supposed to observe, that's an important part of the process, that I should be allowed to observe." She says, "You will be removed by my security out front, there will be nobody in this room except the poll workers themselves, period." So I said, "That just doesn't sound right." So I just zipped it, I put on my bandana for the next two hours, I sat there in complete silence, counted about another 50 people, so I was up to, at 2:00, I was about, to about 220 people. And at 2:00, I'm sitting there, and I'm realizing, "I'm not going to be able to be here at 7:00, and there's really not much else I can see what's going on, so my time here is better served someplace else." So I noticed that a woman came in with her sealed ballot, mail-in ballot, a Hispanic woman, could not speak a word of English, I speak Spanish, and I heard her say, "I have my, this ballot, but I want a new ballot, I want to vote differently." So they took, she immediately, this poll supervisor handled her kit gloves, right on at concierge services, because she was the only person in the building at that time. They take her over, give her a new ballot, and they walk her around these 40 or so ballot stations, and they parked themselves right to where I could see them, intentionally, the ballot, excuse me, the poll supervisor with her back to me, and the translator with a face shield, gesticulating for about 90 seconds. They kept talking to the lady, and the poll supervisor kept looking around, the three-sided partition, looking around, looking around. I'm thinking, "I know it's a crime if I take a picture. I know that, I know it's a misdemeanor, but no one will believe me if I don't capture what's actually going on." So I took my phone out surreptitiously, I put it up, and I took a snapshot, got one, put another one, took another snapshot instantly after, because the guy kept pointing, gesticulating. I didn't take a movie, I just took two stills, and immediately, the poll supervisor wheeled around on her heels and was in front of me in five seconds, says, "Please leave now, you'll be, if you don't leave now, I'll have security drag you out, you're out, you're gone." And I believe that was her plan all along. She didn't want me there to be watching what was going on at 7:00. She told me it wasn't my place to be there. So I left, I drove to the Republican National Headquarters on 24th Street, I got counsel from an attorney there who told me absolutely not. Here's the IRS statute, it says that you are supposed to be there for the breakdown of the ballot, of taking out the data cards, you're supposed to watch the ballots be locked into the box for transportation, and then follow them to the place. So I got my car, I drove straight back around, back down there. By the time I got there, it was about 4:45, and here's this woman out in front with her bodyguard, there's no cars in the parking lot, there's nobody voting, it's 4:45, polls close in two hours and 15 minutes. I had just left there two hours earlier. So I tried to get her attention, and the security gentleman told me that I must leave now, or he'll have me arrested. So I left, telling her, saying, "Please look up IRS statute, I was allowed to be there, you wrongfully terminated me." I was, I never would have taken the picture had I had the right to stay till 7:00. That's when, when I lost my right to be there at 7:00, I decided I would take the next action, which is to get something, proof that if I'm not going to be here at 7:00, I better do something, because this is a crime. I understand you cannot interfere with people voting. So as a result, after that, I just kind of went home with my tail between my legs, really frustrated that I didn't have, wasn't armed with the legal statute to have me stand my ground at the polling place, and the fact that this woman, from 6:30 in the morning, telling me I couldn't relieve myself, I'd have to leave the property, and to stay in my chair, don't walk around, and I understand I had the ability to stand by those ballot machines and just watch people drop them, and not talk to anybody, but to simply watch them drop the ballots, and then find out at the end of the night, were Republican votes in one box and Democrat votes in the other? I don't know. So, that was that day. So then I got a call saying they needed a little more help at the tabulation center, and I got a shift to go Thursday evening at 2:30 till 10:00. I only lasted about an hour, because I asked questions about process, and I was considered rude by the person who was running the situation for asking those questions, and I did get, here's my concern for that, is that they were doing, there was no tabulation going on, no counting, but they were transferring overseas votes from printed PDFs onto digital, onto digital screens, creating votes, which were then, I understood, to be later, to be printed out and then counted. But my problem with that was that I'd noticed there was a handwritten serial number on each one of them, and I can't touch it, so I had to wait till they moved it, and then I had to wait, it takes time to figure out about those. And I went to another station, and it was only 100 difference, another station, like three stations down, and the serial numbers were only off by 100. I thought, "Well, that doesn't seem right, because if there's 100 in each stacks, there should be, the number should be at least 200 or 300 difference." So when I asked the woman, it was my final question, I said, "Where are these ballots' portals, where's this being printed?" And she tried to make it seem like it was a federal thing, and then she admitted that, "No, no, this is a county recorder thing, and it's in a secure room somewhere, a secure portal room." I said, "So it's run by the county?" "Yes." "Who's supervising that? Is anybody giving oversight?" "No." So ballots are being created, they're printing off of a ballot, and then they're putting a serial number on it, and then they're giving it to people to upload it into the machine. Fair enough, but there's no supervision. When it comes out of the printer, what are you printing from? None of that. And then I asked, my final question was, "Is there any way I can find out how many votes were put in for the precinct down at 4701, at the polling place, 4701 South 7th Street?" And she very, sent one of her witnesses away, and in three minutes she came back and said, "524 votes were turned in." And I said, "No, I don't think that's correct, because between 2:00 in the afternoon," again, this is, you know, my opinion, "but there were not 300 people that came in from 2:00 in the afternoon until 7:00," because I was there at 4:30, and there was zero traffic coming in or out. And I was there for about half an hour till I got booted. That's all my story, and I'd like to say, if I can indulge you, legislators, one favor, I'm truly, I just want to say that I'm completely humbled and grateful to be sitting before you, to be able to give this testimony, and I would just like to say to Mayor Giuliani that he has my undying gratitude for his exquisite and epic display of courage and citizenship. And I would very much like to shake his hand if I could. Can I shake your hand?
Thank you, sir. So, members, ladies and gentlemen, we have four more witnesses, and we have gone three hours over the period of time that the hotel has very graciously afforded us. We are going to have to end this by 7:30, so in order to give Mayor Giuliani the opportunity to have a closing statement, for each member here to have a closing statement, there are four individuals that are here that we would like to make sure that we have their testimony in the form of an affidavit. We've got the names, I'll get those to Ms. Ellis, but we are going to have to wrap this up. So, Mr. Giuliani, would you like to have a closing statement?
Sure, and I would like Jenna Ellis to conclude it. I'll be very brief, I'll just review the facts.
Thank you, sir.
We had a long and very disturbing day. I didn't expect things to be this bad, frankly. It's a much worse situation than I realized before I came here. The fraud is much more blatant, more wide open. The whole situation with the Dominion machine is really a national security problem, if you think about it carefully. It's not just Arizona's problem, it's Michigan's problem and Pennsylvania's problem, but it's also the United States' problem, that our votes are going overseas, whether they're connected to China or Venezuela or not, these machines are wide open. China, Russia know how to take information from us from machines far more sophisticated than these extremely poorly constructed devices. And I remember four years ago, we were really upset about the bogus charge of Russian collusion involving some emails that all turned out to be true. They weren't properly obtained, but the information in them turned out to be true, which people fail to realize. And the charge of Russian collusion turned out to be false, and now when we look back on it, the person who colluded with Russia was Hillary Clinton, and the person who got money from Russia was Joe Biden. Now we're facing, not a false charge of collusion, we're facing multiple charges in multiple states of a unheard-of in our history invasion of our sacred right to vote. We had a long, long session today, difficult session, and it began and ended pretty much the same way. It began with the Colonel pointing out that the Dominion machines that you were using in Maricopa might as well have just been wide-open computers that anybody could hack into, anybody had access to.